And state. To allow for continued government operation during the COVID-19 declared emergency. All participating members of the Planning Commission will be present at this meeting through electronic means. And all members of the public are welcome to view the meeting at www.fallschurchva.gov/pc. Public comments will be accepted electronically until the end of the public hearing. Please submit comments via email to plan@fallschurchva.gov. Also, as always, a quick reminder for my fellow commissioners, please make sure you have muted yourself unless you play talk. During discussions, I'll use your mute status or the little raised hand feature of Microsoft Teams as an indication that you have a comment. So stay muted, then you want to talk on mute, raise your little hand, I'll call on you. And then just a reminder that I think someone on staff may mute you, your microphone, or if they think you forgot to mute. So before you speak, just check, make sure you're not muted, otherwise we'll all say, hey, you're muted. And we all know how embarrassing that is. So with that out of the way, it happens to me at least once a meeting, with that out of the way, Ms. Bazemore, can you please call the roll?
Yes, Chair Rankin.
Here.
Mr. Krasner.
Here.
Ms. Teetz.
Here.
Mr. Pontez.
Here.
Mr. Stevens.
Here.
Ms. Weiss.
Here.
Ms. Coman.
Here.
Thank you.
All right, excellent. Now, I think we can just get a motion to adopt tonight's agenda as written, unless anybody has any tweaks. See who unmutes first.
I move that we adopt tonight's agenda.
All right.
One second.
All right, motion from Ms. Weiss, second from Ms. Teetz. Ms. Bazemore, can you call the roll?
Yes, Chair Rankin.
Yes.
Mr. Krasner.
Yes.
Ms. Teetz.
Yes.
Mr. Pontez.
Yes.
Mr. Stevens.
Yes.
Ms. Weiss.
Yes.
Ms. Coman.
Yes.
All right, great. Onto item number four, which is speaker series, which I do not think we have tonight. And then in terms of item five, I'm going to guess we don't have any receipt of petitions for items on the agenda, but Ms. Bazemore will let me know if I'm wrong about that.
There were none.
None, great. Okay, we're on to item six. Our only action item of the night, which is the special exception code amended public hearing. Who's taking charge of this?
Mr. Rankin, if I could, just go ahead and introduce the item before I turn it over to Susan Bell, who's going to be the the lead staffer on this, on the item as well as on the report. This is before you for your recommendation to council, as noted in the agenda. This needs to be held procedurally as a, as a public hearing item. This was talked about at your last work session. There are no changes in the staff report, but there were a couple of comments received, and I'll let Ms. Bell speak to those. I just want to talk a little bit about timing and why this is before you for action now. If we jump to the timing section, which is line 161 of the staff report, you'll see that council did take first reading on this back in the middle of December, December 14th. And at that time, they did schedule the second reading for February 22nd. Of course, the expectation was get to the first work session with the Planning Commission a little sooner, but, but World Events made that a challenge. So you're all's first work session was just last week, and now it's before you for action tonight. So that that action can be, or the recommendation can be communicated to the council for their work session, which will be on February 16th. So I just wanted to highlight the timing, but I'll go ahead and turn it over to Ms. Bell for the staff report.
Thank you, and good evening, everybody. Just to recap, the amendment that's before you is addressing changes to both the primary and secondary criteria. And when we met last week in your work session, there were two areas of particular focus that at least I took away from our discussion. One was comments around 1C, which is line, apologize. It is around line 232, 233. And the issue was whether or not the word residential should be included in criteria three. As you know, it's proposed to be struck at the present time. And then there was a secondary discussion of some length also about whether or not other commissions and boards should provide comment. And as Paul alluded to, we have received comments from both the Environmental Sustainability Committee and the Urban Forestry Commission. So at least two of those that were enumerated in the discussion last week have weighed in with comments primarily on the secondary criteria. And all in the nature of, I think, adding detail and also somewhat more explicit requirements. I don't know, I think you would have received the ESC comments by email in the package today. The ones from Urban Forestry are more brief, but in the similar vein to those that the ESC provided. And I'm happy to take questions or discuss further any of the material that's here. But in the, the motion that's before you for this evening, we are still recommending approval. But in the crafting of the motion, there's an opportunity for you all to recommend revisions and or adjustments, tweaks, however you want to describe it, for the go forward.
I do have a cool question. I think most of us got an email late in the day from Amy Crumpton. Is she one of, it was, she wasn't identified if she had a.
I believe she is with Urban Forestry.
Cool.
Excuse me.
It was like, maybe these are just concerned citizens, but yes, we got those kind of late in the day today. All right. So we're going to discuss, and we have to take action tonight, right, Paul?
That is correct. The schedule has you all taking action tonight.
All right, and so our action can be to approve with a bunch of comments, which I think is kind of what you've teed us up here with.
Yeah. Emily, if you could scroll up to the proposed motion.
You kind of had a fill in the blank.
Yeah, it's, unfortunately, there's no line number. It's in the, it's in the title box, but if you, if you go down to the bottom of the, obviously, the whereas is, as usual, are sort of setting up your authority to act and your, the public benefit of your action and the rationale behind it. And then the therefor's are your actual action, your actual recommendation to council. And of course, the recommendation doesn't need to be as simple as, yes, this all looks great, and no, this looks terrible. There's actually a lot of ground in the middle. And so what's broken out in this motion is trying to tease apart some of that conversation that was happening last week. And so what's in here, Susan said that the staff recommendation is positive. So the first clause here is for the Planning Commission to make a positive recommendation on the zoning changes with the following modifications incorporated. And then the second, the second clause there is that there may be some items that warrant further community discussion and possibly subsequent changes or considerations for changes to the zoning amendment, whether that's in the SE criteria or some other district. And so there's a space as well for the Planning Commission to identify whether there are other areas that are also worthy of consideration that could happen as a subsequent effort or efforts.
Yeah, and part of this, I like that you've broken up like this, because part of the challenge is, I think, the sort of impetus for this change was fairly narrow in terms of adjusting the specific requirement of net new commercial square footage and kind of trying to tweak that. And then I think since a bunch of people have been talking about it, there's been more and more kind of ideas of how to further amend the text. And I think some people, maybe me included, are comfortable with the, pretty comfortable with the small change based on the effort that's happened so far. But I'm a little less comfortable about some of the bigger changes without a little bit more discussion about it, because they kind of have cropped up along the way. So it seems like you're setting up if we wanted to approve with some specific guidance and then potentially encourage them to tackle other aspects of this in a separate effort, which we don't have to do that. That's just the option you've given us, which is, I think, cool. So with that, let's kick off the discussion with Mr. Stevens and his little Microsoft Teams handout.
Yeah, I'm sorry, my video is not seeing anything this evening. Hopefully, my voice is coming through okay.
Sound great.
Good. I do have a question for Ms. Bell, and that is, is my interpretation of the proposed changes correct that the wording, as it is, would require every special exception project to have at least some commercial component?
The wording as proposed does in fact require that, yes.
Is there anything in your reading of our comprehensive plan that requires that?
Well, I think what I would, would refer to would be the small area plans in addition to the comp plan. And certain parts of the city are expected to have commercial development, particularly the downtown areas.
As a whole, yes, but I'm talking about every building, every special exception project.
Well, it's only special exceptions that, well, the part D is the affordable housing project, the part that we're actually moving into its own paragraph, the exception. But other than that, yes, they are expected to. And I don't think the comp plan policy as a policy document is that specific, but it does speak to commercial and particular areas of the city.
Yeah, I would agree with you. I didn't see anything in our comp plan that requires every special exception application to have a commercial component. And so I think that, Mr. Chair, I think that might give me some problems with this item. As I was thinking this through, and I take a project like Park Towers, it's on Park Avenue. I think that's a perfectly fine building in the city. It's in an area that, you know, doesn't really support commercial there, so, you know, doesn't have it. I'm not sure that type of building could be built today under the wording that's being proposed here. And while it may be very limited parts of the city that would have, let's say, an all residential component or without a commercial component. But nonetheless, I think there are at least a few areas where the way this is proposed, it would exclude that. And I'm just not sure that's right. So I just wanted to share that I, you know, I am having a problem with that.
Well, and to be clear, I don't know what the zoning of the Park Towers location is, but presumably, it's not commercial, zoned commercially. And the very focus of the special exception, as I understand it, is to permit other uses in commercially zoned areas, right?
Right.
If you wanted to build a park towers on a residentially zoned area, you wouldn't, you wouldn't need or use special exception. You would, if it's by right, I mean, you could build it by right, but.
Well, let's say that it's in the areas where we're talking about. And, and the purpose of this overall, and it's one I do highly support, which is to allow for smaller infill projects. You know, if we had a proposal come in, let's say on Park Avenue, in an area that's own business, and it was, you know, it didn't have a commercial component, because it was an area where the developer did not feel it would be supported, a commercial element would be supported by the population and so forth. You know, that would be excluded under the way that we're proposing here.
Yeah, no, I think that's on purpose. I mean, I, I've always assumed that, well, I, just to cut to the chase, I mean, that's why I would split this apart. To me, updating the special exception text to permit an all residential development in commercially zoned area would require a lot more thought and discussion than has happened so far. So for me, anyway, so I wouldn't, I wouldn't be comfortable suggesting an adjustment tonight that would result in the ability, for example, to build an all, an all residential condo building in a commercially zoned area on Park. Just because I don't think we've, we've, you know, sort of done our due diligence on the effect of permitting that. But I think that's very on purpose. I mean, that's how this, that's how the special exception has always been written to prevent that, so. But obviously, we could, if, if more people than me think that we should be pushing for a special exception that would permit a 100% residential project, then we, then yes, we'd have to tweak quite a bit of the language, I think.
Yeah, I would agree that, you know, there's more about this that needs to be thought through. But I think that's probably my overall concern, is I don't think we're ready, or at least I don't think we're ready to kind of vote proactively on saying that every special access, special exception project has to have a commercial component.
Right, but that's how, that's how it is now. So you would rather just leave it the way it is now than, than make the, I mean, this is fine. This is kind of honestly the fundamental question. The original beginning of all this was, let's tweak it a little bit so that we don't have to require net new commercial area. Let's just do this little tweak, and now it's kind of blown up to something bigger. We could obviously just say, don't change it, just leave it the way it is, but that also will not permit a residential building.
Yeah, okay, well, anyway, I just wanted to share that concern. I understand what you're saying.
Yeah, and I think that, that's, I mean, that's sort of a fundamental question we should figure out tonight, is if we feel like, hey, there's some motion on changing the SE process, and now's the time to push for a change that would permit all residential construction, but potentially risk having no change at all, then that, that's a path to go down. But I think that's, that's what we're faced with. Like, if we say, hey, no, because it doesn't allow all residential, or hey, here's a lot of changes to it, it's possible that, that it won't change at all, which maybe that's, that's better. I see Ms. Coman has her hand up. You can try it.
I do, thanks. I was, I was hoping that in the, the end of that motion, the further move section, that we could ask that staff look into maybe a separate process for the transitional zone, maybe the civic great streets, which I think are the areas that Tim is talking about. Because I agree with him that there may be cases where, you know, we would want an all smaller, all residential building. It might make sense in that area, and right now, we're really kind of hamstrung. But I also agree with you, Andy, that, you know, it shouldn't, we shouldn't be making major changes without really discussing what the implications of those might be. So I would, I would support, you know, I don't know exactly what the wording is, but for that, that, at the end of the motion, that, you know, that staff review, you know, maybe some sort of separate process for, for those areas. And while I'm talking, I'm still, I'm still wondering about the, the requirement to, the removal of the end residential revenue to the city. I think that the original wording that the staff had proposed was net new revenue to the city. It didn't matter what kind, as long as it was profitable. And since primary criteria B is requiring rent, commercial space, it seems to me like the commercial is, you know, having that in criteria C is kind of redundant, maybe not necessary. I don't know whether it hems us in more, if that's a good thing or a bad thing, but I'm still questioning that.
Ms. Teetz, you had some thoughts?
Yes, um, you know, I felt like when I first read this, a lot of what was being done was kind of semantics. I mean, we're just using nicer language instead of consideration of all opportunities available to add. We, we changed it to revitalize and, and, you know, we added vibrant and walkable, all those terms that we really, really like. So, but I kind of felt in the end, it doesn't really change the process. It just makes it more aligned with what's going on, because as we all know, in the last couple of years, or, well, actually, almost every project that came in under special exception hasn't really met the commercial side that we wanted. So I kind of felt like we were changing the code to be more flexible, because the fact is, the results of our negotiation hasn't really ended up with projects that really meet it. You know, if you think about the last decade of this. So, so in a way, I was kind of like, eh, you know, if they want to change the language, and we want to make the language more aligned with what we're actually doing, that makes a lot of sense. But I do have a problem with, with C a little bit in that. I do think, I think it makes more sense to just take out commercial and residential, if we're going to do that, and just say net new revenue to the city. And because I think pulling out residential doesn't make sense with leaving commercial in. I mean, I think it should be just net new revenue, and, and we figure out what that revenue is. But, and I'm not really open at this point, talking to Mr. Stevens' point, that, you know, to me, the special exceptions being on land zone for commercial should have a commercial component. I'm not really open to an all residential building on commercial land. At this point, I think that we still need more retail and commercial in the city. So, I mean, so that's kind of an issue for me. And I guess that's what I, that would be my question to staff. I don't think anything here changes the fact that the special exception process is based on land that's currently zoned for commercial, and therefore, the expectation is there will at least be some retail and commercial in the project. And I don't see anything that changes that. So that, that would be my question to staff, is how do they really, what do they really think this does, other than putting in some nicer language? And, I mean, what does this really change, other than try, to really, it's now closer to what we're actually doing, since we haven't really got the commercial we're supposed to get. And I just want to mention too, I thought in the memo sent out by the ESC chair, that I thought his addition to 48-90C was actually a nice one, and in environmentally sustainable and resilient. But, I mean, I'm not going to die on the sword for that, but I thought that was a nice addition. I'd like to see that in the motion.
To your question, I think the major difference is that it is explicit in the preamble that a project has to meet all three of the criteria. That's a change from the past. And I think the second change is that by adding the language about the small area plans, it tightly, more tightly aligns policy and ordinance, which I think is really important, because you all put a lot of work into these small area plans. And by tying them into the ordinance and explicitly making them something that is part of the discussion, I think you're giving them a little more prominence, frankly, than they might otherwise have, and more importance.
Yeah, I'll grant you that, but, but we all know these criteria get squishy in the middle of negotiations. So, and it, this language change isn't going to stop that. But anyway, I, I'm fine with that. I would like to see commercial pulled out and just have positive net new revenue. And I would like the addition that the ESC suggested. I thought that was good language.
This, this may be a good time just to pause and make sure everybody has a copy. So the, the comments from the ESC chair, staff received those earlier this week. And so those were included in your packet as, as an attachment to the staff report. The comments from the Urban Forestry Commission members, they came in later today. Emily, I don't, okay, this is perfect. Is it, the text is a little tight. Is everyone able to read this on their, on their screens? And just for clarity, the, the suggestions for wording changes, we went back, staff went back and looked at these and compared these to the proposed language in the staff report, as well as the existing language that's adopted. And in both cases, the, the ESC comments and the Urban Forestry comments were commenting on the code as adopted. So in some cases, there are instances where the suggestions from the group are exactly as, the same as what's in the proposed language from staff. So, so there's overlap, as well as some things that are, that are different.
My apologies, could someone summarize the Urban Forester? I can't, I can't read the print here.
Yeah, Emily, can you?
Yeah, I can read them verbatim off the screen, since they're not too long. Dear Mr. Sutter and members of the Planning Commission, we suggest the following additions to the language used in the primary and secondary criteria within section 48-90, special, special exception provision of chapter 48 zoning article two, administration division three amendments. Within the zoning ordinance soliciting comment, then there's a link. We suggest adding the italicized wording to the primary criteria. Lines 211 to 212, residential uses will be considered if they contribute significant positive net revenue to the city and create a vibrant, walkable, equitable, resilient, and environmentally sustainable community. With regard to secondary criteria, we suggest modifications to item E on landscaping and open space. Lines 246 through 247, E period, the resulting development offers purposeful creative use of landscaping, open space and/or public parks, public plazas, and walkways connecting to adjoining properties that incorporate sustainable landscaping and green infrastructure best practices for stormwater mitigation, urban heat island management, and wildlife habitat support. We believe that these modifications reinforce the city's stated goals for protecting and enhancing its natural resources as outlined in chapter five of the comprehensive plan. Thank you for considering these additions. Sincerely, Amy Crumpton and Kathleen Solpat-Costa.
The first reference, which is to line 211 to 12, is actually 215 in the draft that's in your package.
Thank you.
All right, any other, anybody else have comments, or twice?
Um, I just want to sort of align with the principle that the special exceptions process thus far has been about getting commercial, more commercial space. I am definitely open to a process that would allow for more residential. I don't think this is the venue or the moment for it, without further detail. I support Ms. Teetz's comment to remove commercial from primary criteria C. I do think it should simply say, just produce substantial positive net new revenue. I think if it produces revenue, that is good, and it allows for flexibility in terms of mix of residential versus commercial. I support the Urban Forestry Commission's edits to paragraph D. I like how it adds equitable as well. I think that was the one word that was missing from the ESCs, so I would, I would support the Urban Forestry Commission's edit. I support the ESC's addition to paragraph B of the secondary criteria, not omitting. I think their edit likely unintentionally omits some things in the current staff draft, but I would like to see the addition of utilizing green rather than gray infrastructure to the fullest extent possible. So there, there are full comments there. I support the Urban Forestry's comment or edit to E. I think that's an excellent addition. I think line H in the secondary criteria, I think that edit mirrors exactly staff's edit, so I think we're good there. And then I, I support the ESC's edit to secondary criteria J. This aligns their edit would certainly get us more in line with Arlington's green building policy, and I think we should try to get there. I'm glad that these two commissions submitted comments, but I would like to, so recognizing that I think the primary objective of city council might have been focused on the primary criteria. If secondary criteria are on the table, I would recommend that they seek input from other boards and commissions who are affected, so. That, yeah, so I support US, Urban Forestry Commission, ESC, and I think city council should get other comments as well.
All right, sounds good. Mr. Pontez, you have thoughts? Seeing this record, so you're muted. It's going to happen to somebody.
Yep, I hit the hand button, not the mic button. I, yeah, just quickly, I, Ms. Weiss's comments, especially there at the end, very consistent was what I was thinking. The, I think this is definitely certainly better, right? I mean, the, it's in this, the tug of war, the push and pull around commercial versus residential, I think makes, is the right conversation to be having. I mean, this, this was created, right, a lot of ways for focusing really just on the fiscal. You know, even in the staff report, I mean, the three tables talk about what's happened from these SE projects. Doesn't talk about anything but the net fiscal impact, right? So these other criteria that I think we all care about, and we've talked a lot about here today, I think are becoming more. I think are becoming more prominent, more important in the city, right? We've talked about socially equitable, environmentally friendly, all these kinds of things. So, I'm glad this conversation is happening. And I, but I think the way that the staff has laid it out where we could park some of these for discussion later is the right way to go because I think it feels like two different conversations to me, moving away from just this pure fiscal, create, please create these fiscal benefits, which is why this thing was created in the first place, to what it's become, right? Which Ms. Teetz was talking about, it has all these other benefits. And, you know, as it relates to housing or residential versus commercial, I do align with that too. And we've talked a lot about affordable housing in this commission and elsewhere over the last few years. And if we got a really great project in, that was a hundred percent affordable, you know, that would be tough, something that would be tough to, you know, for, to reject for that. So, I, you, overall, I think this is the right thing to do. I'm glad that we've, that we've talked, that we've hit on this. And I, and I think the way the staff has set it up with these two, with this, this two-stage process for things we want to talk about here today and then later, is probably the right way to go. Because I feel like you're parallel discussions.
All right, thanks for that. Ms. Teetz, you still have your hand up, but I think that might have been from before. All right, Mr. Stevens?
It was, sorry.
Yeah, just, just a brief follow-up on my comments. I just wanted to clarify that I'm not arguing overall that we have more residential in the commercial area. I'm just saying that not every special exception project, you know, should be looked at as requiring, as needing to have a commercial component. I mean, overall, we do want probably more commercial, more retail as Ms. Teetz said. But again, I would just focus that is it necessary that every special exception project have it? And since the underlying motivating factor for these changes was to broaden the funnel, I think that was the term that was used to allow more projects in the gate for consideration than it seems to me excluding or requiring a commercial component in every project would, would not help in that regard. But obviously, I'm on the losing end of this discussion, so I won't belabor this. But I did just want to clarify that, that one item.
Yeah, thanks for that. And for the record, I, I definitely think city council needs to think about ways to increase presidential development and housing options. I'm all for it. I just, I understand that like as part of this little update, doesn't seem appropriate to me. But, all right, does anyone else have any thoughts? I mean, I have a couple of thoughts as well, but I'll share those until I see a hand come up. I think, I think I agree with everybody about removing commercial, the word commercial from item C on line two thirty-two, partially because, I, you know, line two fifteen up in the, up in the preamble, whatever that's called, mentions significant positive net revenue benefits to the city without, you know, classifying source of that. So, it just sort of seems inconsistent or confusing, you know? It's unclear to me what they mean. So, if city council wants, if city council is trying to achieve something by having commercial in there, I would say they, it's unclear to me what they're achieving. So, you know, it just would make more sense to me to remove that. And then, I think I'm sort of indifferent to the various contributions from the ESC and the other folks in terms of sprinkling in those other items. I mean, I think that's fine. I, you know, at some point, you know, the code gets kind of fluffy. So, I don't know if it matters that much. I do appreciate all the references to the small area plans because those are potentially living documents where we can adjust our planning and it bubbles up to the special exception process. So, I'm a little wary of trying to take too much of what we actually have figured out and put into a smaller area plan and try to distill that down into specific things that we include in this text. But I'm not, I'm not opposed to it. I mean, the only one I guess I would wonder about is bumping up the lead from silver to gold. I don't really even know the implications of that. But, and it's a secondary criteria, so it doesn't, it's not like they could still come in with silver. But that's one where I just don't know if that's a bad idea or not. But the other ones all seem fairly harmless to have that amount of detail about bike racks and gray water and stuff like that. But if people are into that, I'm not against it. Those are my thoughts, Mr. Krasner.
And I wasn't going to add too much more, but then, you know, when you just mentioned, you know, the language starts to get fluffy. You know, I would just, I agree with you that, you know, we have to keep in mind, this is code. This is, this is the ordinance. And, you know, again, I view this as sort of like an incremental update, you know? You know, now that this has been on the books for some time and kind of taking stock of what has worked. And so, yeah, this is not obviously a significant shift as Ms. Teetz said. You know, I think it, you know, I think it recognizes some of the realities of the market. I mean, I think any good ordinance, you know, has to, you know, on the one hand, you know, it's trying to steer developers and steer development towards what the city wants to see and built on the ground. But keeping in mind what's, what's realistic, what's practical. And I think that, so in that sense, I think that, you know, this sort of does that. But I still, so I, you know, but in that sense, keeping the focus on commercial development, I think is appropriate. And so, I think this is somewhat of an incremental shift. I don't think it's a major, you know, overhaul, but perhaps that's not needed now. And so, some of the other things, you know, that the ESC folks mentioned, I think are laudable. And, and they are, they certainly are, they're in our, our, our planning documents. But we have, we have to be careful about putting terms like equitable and things of that nature into the ordinance without explaining exactly what we mean. Because then, you know, it just opens it up to, you know, significant debate and interpretation and misinterpretation. So, so, yeah, I just, when you said that, it just struck a chord with me that I think that we have to be careful about that. And as presented tonight, I'm fine with, with the updates. But I would be hesitant to start, you know, significantly adding, you know, sort of aspirational things into here that, that are not clearly defined. That's all.
All right, Ms. Come on.
I think I heard Ms. Teetz support the ESC's recommendation for the edit to the primary criteria. Is that right, Ms. Teetz?
Yes, that's correct.
Addition of the resulting development is environmentally sustainable and resilient and conforms to the city's adopted comprehensive plan. But that would be a more significant edit, I think, from us and one that I would also support. I don't know if there was any other discussion on that particular suggestion.
I don't, I don't know. Anyone have any thoughts about that particular suggestion? We're talking about?
The first criteria.
Item A under the primary criteria.
Correct.
That's correct. And I, I mean, I really think this is an important thing to add. In my day job, I do research. And, and for Gen X and millennials, the climate, climate issues and environmental issues are very, really important to them. And, and it should be because we're talking about the future that they have to live in. And so, I just think it would be really great to put that in there and to make it stand out. Because if it's down in the section below where it has so many, you know, points, different bullet points, basically, it doesn't stand out.
I think it makes it, I agree, I think it makes it a real priority. It shows that this is a priority for the city.
And it shows that we really care about our younger generations who are going through a very tough time right now.
I'm ready to strangle my younger generation, so.
And I'll say, I support, I'm sorry, I certainly support the, the goal. I, but I wonder, is it, is it measurable, right? Is it something that we can, I'm trying to think, I mean, is there, I'm trying, is there any developers in the last few years who would have said that their projects were not environment, didn't fit whatever criteria of environmentally sustainable? They've all talked about it as, as a thing. I would be more supportive if you wanted to say something like reduces greenhouse gases or results. And, you know, something that is quantifiable and measurable. I don't, I don't even know if we can, if we can measure greenhouse gases, but something like that. But it, it, it just strikes, this is Mr. Krasner's point, I think that I don't know, I support it in concept. I just don't know how it would manifest itself in practice.
I guess in reality, if we wanted to do something like that, we, you have to put a standard against it, which is why we have lead and we have all these other things. Because we can't, like you said, we can't, if they say, oh, this is green, we can't know that unless it has some kind of standard it's being measured against. So, I mean, and I get, I mean, that, that's in there somewhere. But, but I still think so much of this language is visionary. You know, like, like I was pointing out, we're talking about vibrant and revitalized and walkable. And we can't really, we're not given measurements for that either. And so, I just kind of felt like in that visionary side of the language, it would be good to put this as well. But, but I, but I totally agree with you. I mean, what's really probably more important is if we said everything had to be lead platinum or something equivalent. But, but I'd just like to see it more in your face than what it is right now. But, but, you know, I'm not going to die on the sword for that.
Yeah, and I'll get to the people that hands up, but real quick, a question for Mr. Stoddard, I think if he's listening. When we make our recommendation as drafted, are our, I understand that, I think you told me that the, the process is if we say, hey, thumbs up from us, then, then they just need like a majority of people present to pass. But if we, if they want to change the text to be something that we didn't give a thumbs up to, they need a super majority or whatever. But are we, when we say, hey, here's the following modifications, those, they'd have to take those modifications or get a super majority to, to adjust them? My, my, my point being like, including some of these things seem fine to me. City council could take it or leave it, but it sounds like if we include them, they might have to either take it or get a super majority to leave it, right?
Yes, so the, the planning commission has special responsibilities afforded to it. So, the, the city's zoning powers come from, from the city's charter. And in that, it specifies that, that all zoning changes like this one have to be referred out to the planning commission. And the planning commission needs to make a recommendation. When you all make a positive recommendation, then council can, can move to second reading with a, with a majority, a simple majority vote. When you all make a negative recommendation, then council needs five affirmative votes in order to, to move their item, which is obviously a higher threshold. I think what you're asking is, is then sort of going one step further. If you all not only recommend sort of, you know, positive action, but positive action with specific language inserted, and then council tries to, to sort of adjust that and still take action. I think some of that would be a legal question about whether you, whether they've actually changed it sort of significantly from what you recommended. To the thought about where, where language about sort of the city's, the community's goals for environmental sustainability might best fit in a, in a zoning ordinance. I think with any, now Brent, you do this as a day job interpreting zoning language. But there's a, right, there's, there's sort of the, the opening section of the code, which sort of is, is, you know, runs through line two twenty-three. That's sort of laying out your public, public purpose about what the community is trying to achieve with the zoning ordinance. And then to Mr. Krasner's point, that the criteria that start on line two twenty-four, that's where it's laying out how these things are actually going to be measured or assessed. So, I do think that something like striving for generally environmental sustainability, I, I think that's a good thing to identify in your, in your public purpose, sort of in the lines above two twenty-three. I think anything about a specific standard you're trying to achieve, for example, where the lead standards get identified, I think that's a, that's a standard that you can really assess against. The other thing just to call out is that environmental sustainability is actually one of the eight core principles in the city's comprehensive plan. And so, I, I just want to raise that, that there are seven other core principles. And so, to put one in the primary criteria and not the other seven, you could end up with just an iteration of all the core principles. And then you've, you haven't really highlighted anything, you've just repeated it all.
All right, thanks for those thoughts. We'll get to Mr. Stevens and then Ms. Weiss.
Yeah, I'll keep this very brief because I don't think council really want, what was expecting or wanted us to go outside the box on this. But if we were, excuse me, the issue of the secondary criteria versus primary maybe passed, passed its prime or shelf life. And it might be better just to have, these are the things that we want. I'm kind of reminded of Dan Z, you know, if Dan, Dan wanted something, it didn't matter where it was in the code. This is what I want. If you want my vote, this is the way it's going to be. And that was his assessment of what, you know, was important for the city. So, if, if at some point this does get opened up for reconsideration, I would certainly be behind trying to elevate these environmental issues to something other than just as discretionary and secondary.
Okay, Ms. Weiss?
Yeah, I want to, just two comments. One, you know, while I'm a dedicated, you know, environmentalist by day, that's my day job. I didn't suggest, I don't oppose adding environmentally sustainable to primary criteria A. But to Paul's point, it's in the city's adopted comprehensive plan. And so, in that particular piece of language, I had a question of like, are we elevating chapter five over all other chapters in the comprehensive plan? And in, on top of that, I do think we have to have a discussion about what do these secondary criteria mean? Because they are a hodgepodge. It is hard to tell what our priorities are. And in contrast to a place that, I am not in the real estate market, but it seems to me that there's a pretty clear incentive in places like Arlington where they give you bonus density for higher certifications of lead. And they give you bonus density for affordable housing. And I think we don't have a clear mechanism to tell the market that this is what we prioritize. And in the words of Tim Stevens quoting Dan Z, this is what we want. And I, so I, I know city council is not expecting a broader picture conversation on secondary criteria, but if it's on the table, we might want to have that conversation. Do we want all eight or however many secondary criteria we have? Or is it safe to say that a lot of these are in the comprehensive plan? And we really want to prioritize two additional things, you know, affordability and, you know, environmental sustainability? And then like Mr. Stevens, Kim just said, we just have one set of criteria, A, B, C, D, E and F, and that's it.
Yeah, I will suggest that that's a lot of good ideas, but that for the purposes of tonight, we would maybe throw that into the I further move part. I'm not prepared to stay up all night and try to rewrite this whole thing. I think it'd be fruitless anyway. But I do think that all that stuff you're talking about is, is spot on in terms of where we maybe need to go at some point. But, I mean, I, you go talk to the city councils, I think all of them would admit that over the years, our SE process has had challenges. You know, it's gotten us a lot of stuff, so it can't complain too much. But it would definitely be a heavy lift to reimagine how we do all of this kind of stuff, which doesn't mean we shouldn't do it, but we shouldn't do it tonight. I don't think, but I would be totally in favor of throwing out those kinds of ideas in the further, I further move that you guys think about this stuff. Any other thoughts? I think what we're trying to get to tonight is what we have in front of us are the edits in place that have some things new like buyer burden and walkable. So, we've got all of that, that's kind of what came to us from city council. And then we've got a handful of suggestions from two other groups. And then I think we have one, I think we've only come up with one of our own suggestions, which is potentially to strike commercial from row two thirty-two. But maybe this discussion has inspired someone else. So, you know, we could approve as is, as the current edits show, we could approve with that and, and all of the things we've been suggesting or some subset. But we need to, I think, move towards And all of the things we've been suggested or some subset, but we need to, I think, move towards um. Listing out what 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 changes we do want to um recommend, if we do want to recommend some, which it sounds like we do want to recommend at least a few, or maybe all of them. So who who feels strongly about, for example, the the ESC edits? Ms. Weiss, I'm muted, I know she feels strongly about them.
I I, how do you want to do this? Do you want to? Edit by edit and just like yea or nay, and you to them, or?
Um, yes, this is where it'd be a lot easier for just sitting in a room, and I could look around and see who's nodding and crap, but. Uh, yeah, why don't, why don't we, I mean, so let me just throw out there, one, one option is to take all of the edits we received, so it's all this yellow highlighted stuff from the ESC, and then a couple of these italic things. In the email we got this afternoon, and there's some overlap there. Um, plus our striking of the word commercial from item C in the primary criteria. I, if you guys all felt like you want to do that, I would vote for that because I I it's not, I I don't. I don't think any of those additions are like deal breakers, but I would also support minimizing the edits uh that we suggest. In order to maximize the chances of it actually being approved. So. Ms. Kumon's going to tell us what to do.
I'd also support, I think, minimizing the edits. With the the one edit of removing uh the word commercial from criteria C, and then asking in the further move section for a review of the secondary criteria. Um, and also. A staff analysis of whether there should be a a different process, maybe for the transitional zones or the civic great streets. And then the other thing that I wanted to ask about was um that seventy-five percent figure, the exception um for affordable housing. Whether staff could do a review of whether or not that's still appropriate and reasonable, or whether that should be a different number. So those would be sort of like the three things that I would look for in the further move section, and then the the single edit to strike the word commercial.
And to be clear, in the further move, would you, would you suggest we tell city council, hey, look at the ESC and the, I keep forgetting the urban forestry or whatever the other group was. Look at their suggestions and take them into account as well, because. Because then they.
Definitely.
They can decide to adopt them on the spot, I don't think they would need to come back. Maybe they would.
That'd be great, I think their comments should be included, but I also agree with Mr. Stevens and um Ms. Weiss, that maybe there should be more of, I mean, those secondary criteria do seem. Do do seem quite discretionary to me, like, it's a nice to have thing, but maybe some of those things should be must haves. But that's a bigger discussion.
Yes, Mr. Stoddard, you've got your hand up.
Uh, thank you, just in terms of facilitating uh the conversation of the group, not not assessing sort of what belongs in what list. Um, would it be helpful uh if staff were to pull up maybe a Word version of this? Uh, and and we could sort of respond to your comments in real time and sort of type things out, that way you'd also know what what motion you're you're voting on. I'm I'm seeing a big head nod from at least one person. Um, Emily, are you able to pull up the Word first? I know you had sort of everything set up to go, and this is sort of an on the fly change.
I was wondering if you're uh throwing a fastball at Emily here.
I I am, so I I I don't know if that breaks everything, does that work, Emily?
Uh, I'm gonna try, uh, let's see.
Yeah, I mean, that that would help, I'm sure Ms. Weiss is thinking, maybe I'll make this motion, but man, it'd be easier if. If the words were there to read, sometimes it's hard to do those on the fly. Ooh, there we go.
Yeah, here we go.
Uh, and just to respond to what Andrea said, I mean, I I I will support that approach, maybe a small tweak, and then in the in the. Now there, you know, furthermore move, whatever it is, um, those items that she suggested, I would support those. But what do I?
Well, I was just gonna ask, how do you want to, do you want to go, I I don't want to sort of run the meeting here, but and just because there is a lot of stuff to collect, and and I'm thinking about sort of if I were to put on my facilitator hat. Do you just want to go through the group once and ask, you know, who wants to put what where, and then and then you all can hash it out?
Yeah, that sounds great, that sounds great. Uh, I'll start at the bottom, Mr. Stevens. And just to clarify, what we're asking is um. In the in the motion here that Ms. Bazemore is going to edit in real time. We've got two sections, the first one is specific changes that we want, which I think everyone agrees. Although I don't, if you don't, feel free to speak up, uh, that we would strike commercial from that uh items, you know, C of the primary criteria. And then there's, and then otherwise is unclear if we want to include more in that list, but maybe we do, and then the second list is the other things that we want the council to review. And potentially update.
Yeah, I'll be voting against the item, so I guess it doesn't make sense for me to get into a lot of detail on other edits. Uh, but I I would, you know, putting aside my overall concern, I would certainly go along with uh. Uh, Ms. Kumon's uh suggestions.
Okay. Thanks for that, Mr. Pointez, do you have thoughts on this approach?
Yeah, I'm fine, I'm fine with approach. Um, just the two comments that I have that I haven't reconciled in my head is um, I I I think. Mrs. Weiss is, Ms. Weiss's um recommendation about the the further, the further uh further move. Um, something about revising those secondary criteria, that 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 her suggestion really struck. Um, the chord with me, I think that makes a lot of sense, and just boiling that down to the things that we really, the things that we really want to see. I just, they they almost feel useless as they are right now, there's redundancy, there's unenforceability, there's all kinds of things, so I I'd like to see if we can capture that somehow. Um, at least for the next revision, whenever that's going to be. My only concern then with the with striking commercial, what I, and and folks can tell me if this is not, is not a possibility is. If we strike commercial, um, what I don't want to see is a is a very, very fancy luxury housing development comment. Right, that that may have positive net revenue for the city, but doesn't really hit a lot of the of the major things we want to see happen. Um, I I just, and that's, it it seems like that is not implausible, and I'm concerned that that would be. A result of of striking that that word, striking the word commercial.
Right, so you're saying there's still some significant new or renovated commercial space, because that's item B, but that space is. Ultimately not compelling, uh, and so the revenue it generates doesn't matter anymore because we've struck the. Net new positive, substantial positive net new commercial revenue part. Yeah, I I sometimes share that concern.
Emily, my, she's not sensitive, I agree with the sentiment, but I also think if we're tying the language to the small area plans, hopefully our small area plans are doing the work there. And, you know.
Yeah, I mean, you could say that about basically everything. But yeah, I, that's a good question, i- if the small area plan requires there to be compelling commercial, I mean, I. I think the fact. Substantial positive net new commercial, I mean, the way it's written, it seems like what city council is trying to do is say like, hey, look, we don't actually care. About the square footage, it could be basically the same or less square footage, as long as there's a a large. Positive change in the revenue coming from a commercial, so that may be there, that, you know, that may be important to them. And if we do strike commercial from item C, that would allow a redevelopment that has some commercial component to it that's not particularly compelling. And item C and whatever line, whatever it is up in the top, line two oh. I don't know, two sixteen or um. And that could happen, so I don't know, that's a good question, uh, city council may balk at striking commercial from item C. But, doesn't mean we can't do it, I mean, my thought on striking it was more. And it's it's prevented by the part in the preamble where it has to have a significant positive net revenue overall, but. My my concern was you'd have something that have, has a real positive commercial revenue component to it, you know, relatively speaking. Because s- some of the places that are potential for redevelopment don't have, it's not a very high bar to have a substantial positive new net commercial revenue, because current revenue is so low. But you can have a project that has, eh, eh, has net eh positive commercial revenue, uh, but their residential is a big money loser, now that. I'm not as concerned because then that overall project wouldn't have a significant positive net revenue, but. But, you know, that's why, to me, I was tempted to put in residential back in. But, anyway, now you've convinced me, Rob, I don't know, either way, I'm not sure which way is better, with or without commercial. Ms. Weiss.
I I just have a procedural question, and the intent of this is to make the discussion easier and not more complicated, so if I've gotten it wrong, please let me know, but. I wonder if it wouldn't be easier to make a series of amendments and vote on each of those amendments. Right, we can just vote on strike commercial, yes or no, and then we just vote on it, and the city council has the benefit of seeing the results of that vote as well. Does that help? Or are we looking for consensus here?
Well, I mean, the po- the problem is, we can only pass one recommended text, and then city council can take it or super majority that passed, right, Paul?
Uh, I, you know, I can, I can check with the with the city attorney, I think some of this would be the phrasing of your recommendation, so if you're recommend, and and even this, I'd have to double check, right? But if your recommendation is insert these three words, um, you know, on this line, then that's that's pretty explicit, whereas if your recommendation is. Um, you know, add consideration for environmental sustainability to the public purpose section, well, that that, they can still do that. Um, i- i- you know, if that's your goal, they can do that, but you know, how they do it, they they'd have a little bit of freedom. Um, you know, to move it from one sentence to the next, it it just, because everyone's going to wordsmith this thing when it goes through council package review, um, there's, you know, there's five different people in city hall that look at it and want to wordsmith it, so. Um, I I think it's a little easier if you all, as the commission, can say sort of what you, unless you're really, eh, eh, you know, striking that word commercial is a key item, so that I think needs to be explicit. Um, but when you're talking about things like cleaning up the secondary criteria, um, whatever it is, eh, eh, to the extent that you can say what it is you want to achieve. Um, it it leaves everybody, um, it makes for a smoother process. The um mechanically, I think, um, Commissioner Weiss, if if um, you know what you're describing in terms of putting things through and then having people decide on them one at a time. Um, one way you all could do that mechanically is go ahead and open this up to public hearing, um, check if there are any comments, close the public hearing, someone could put a motion on the table, that's sort of the motion with just two blank lists, and then I think you could just. Um, entertain all the changes as essentially friendly amendments, and and if anyone opposes one, then you guys could, that would be your vote, uh, either up or down there.
Uh, yeah, I, that that seems reasonable if we're just talking about one or two specific tweaks, but I don't want to do that for like fifteen different things. Uh, all right, have we moved closer to?
The um, well, the other, the other technique we could use is is sort of like a popcorn technique. Um, um, where sort of uh people chime in with things they either want to, I think you would say, sort of things they want to add to one or eh, uh, one of the lists, and then Emily could go ahead and type it in. And then you all could have, you could sort of work through those two lists, and then talk about whether to add or remove them, and that could be done without a motion on the table.
Let's do that, let's. Already talking to Stevens, he says he's, he's kind of politely saying, hey, you guys are crazy, that's fine. Uh, I'll I'll more quickly go through the rest of people, add, add things to the list, everyone can add wherever they want, and then I, and then I'll, I'll. Try to efficiently figure out if we don't, if somebody's uncomfortable with things that have been added, I, so far, it sounds like. We may or may not add striking commercial in in the first section, and it sounds like I support the idea of adding another criteria, which is asking them to. You know, increase the emphasis on environmental sustainability, and kind of leave it up to city council to figure out how to do that, and then and then the second section have a bunch of these of it. So, let's do that. I'm going to start with Ms. Weiss, because I think she's all over this.
I'll do my best, with a caveat that I didn't fall asleep until four o'clock in the morning, so my coherence is rapidly declining to the extent that it was here in the first place.
That's fine.
Yes, so. Number one. I have to also admit, I'm confused on where we are on this, but I still think that we should strike commercial from primary criteria C.
All right, add that to the list.
Yep. Okay. Number two. I would say, so here's where I want to talk about what's in paragraph D, um, lines two sixteen, line two sixteen. I would like to suggest that we um. Incorporate environmental sustainability. And equity. Or we could say, and I think inclusiveness is the word that we use in the comprehensive plan is our vision, we haven't actually gone as far as saying equity, but um. I'll take the directions from the group. Okay. Um, line three. So, I mean, here, here's my concern, I I understand. Streamlining our edits, um, and I would like to have a more robust conversation about secondary criteria, I am afraid. That city council might vote on this, and that's it, and we don't get another bite of the apple for secondary criteria. So, I would like to put in like contingency, um, I would like to say something like, um. Um. You know, what I want is to recommend that we have a more robust look at secondary criteria. If that does not happen, I would like city council to incorporate the the edits. To the secondary criteria. Um. In alignment of the UFC and ESC's comments.
Yeah, and I do think, and we can, before we vote on this, this is what we can debate on, I mean, I do think this is the calculation that we're going to be making, which is. Do we make a recommendation to city council that has the potential of preventing any changes from happening? Uh, because we think that that's going to be our best bet of getting these bigger changes, or do we. Present them with something that we're pretty sure that they'll just take and hope that they will continue looking at this. Uh, to make additional changes, that's the calculation that we that we have to make.
With that calculation in mind, then maybe what we should say in number three is, rather than conduct a robust review. Um. Incorporate edits from the ESC and the UFC. To the secondary criteria, specifically. Secondary criteria. D, sorry, secondary criteria B. E. H. Strike H. Stuff is already done, H, uh, secondary criteria B, E, and J.
Is is E from the urban forestry people?
E is from urban forestry. Resulting development offers purposeful creative use of landscaping, open space, and our public parks, public plazas, and walkways connecting to blah blah blah. Uh, incorporate sustainable landscaping and green infrastructure, best practices for stormwater mitigation, urban heat island management, and wildlife habitat.
All right. Anything else?
Um, then maybe number, maybe in the second bucket, I further move. Is where we recommend a more robust review of the secondary criteria.
All right.
Review and recommend updates to special exception criteria that would, um. How about conduct a more robust review of the secondary criteria that um provides more clear prioritization?
Yeah, I mean, honestly, listening to you guys talk about, to me, what you really, what it sounds like what you guys really want is an additional primary criteria that's environmentally based. Um, I mean, I think the point of secondary criteria and having a, a bunch of them is, is that you don't expect them to do all of them. You expect them to do some of them. And I think what you guys want is some, some actual required environmental component.
Right.
That and, uh,
Go ahead.
I was gonna say that and the housing, your, Ms. Weiss's comment about, um, some kind of quantification about an affordable housing, uh, goal.
Can, maybe, can we rephrase, rephrase number one to say, conduct a more robust review of the primary and secondary criteria together that enables stronger prioritization of environmental sustainability and affordability? Is that a better way of saying it?
I like it. Pretty good on no sleep. And then, I, I don't want to cut in line, but it does seem like another one i- is some sort of, I mean, I, we, we talked about suggesting that they even reevaluate the overall approach uh, to these kinds of developments. I don't know how to concisely say that, but that, like you're pointing out Arlington's approach to, um, bonus density for actually achieving certain criteria, but, uh, you know. I don't know, there's a, there's a concise way to say that. And then the other one is related to that or related to both these things, which is this idea of either updating the special exception process or developing a process that would, that would facilitate the development of uh, residential-only projects in appropriate commercial-zoned areas. Because that's a whole, it's a whole ball of wax that, that doesn't get tackled with any of this stuff. I mean, it's sort of in the prioritization of affordability, but not exactly. Emily's like, you didn't say exact words for me to type. I know. But what are, are those the two other things that we can include down there? Do people agree with that? I can try to, but I'd, I think number two would be, um, effort, staff review would recommend that be special criteria that would, the, 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 the big one is too hard to say, I think. But I think you could definitely say would enable development of residential-only projects where appropriate, or something. I don't know how to even describe that, but like, and it's not like city council hasn't thought about this, so they'll, they'll know what we mean. All right. Do we want to try to, I, I can't think of the words for the big picture, like, hey, throw this out and try a whole new approach.
Andy, did you mean in that number two, uh, all residential? It would have made all residential?
Yeah, enable a, a, um, yeah, all residential. I mean, I mean, technically, it would be a commercial-free project, but yeah, all residential, yeah, that. That, that's the question.
Resident or residential only?
Yeah, enable residential.
It's clear.
Yeah, that's better. Yeah, because that's the question is, if somebody wants to build a condo building on, on commercially-zoned land on park, you know, how do they do it? Can't do it, right? I mean, they could try to get it rezoned, I guess, but. Uh, do we want an attempt to the number three? Paul's going to say it's smart.
I, I don't, I don't know about that. I was just going to ask, I felt like I heard the group talking about maybe two different things. Um, uh, when it comes to the residential-only projects, that there's, um, uh, it was raised, the, the idea of a residential-only project on one of the city's, uh, major streets, like a, like a Broad or a Washington, um, versus a residential-only project on a park or a maple. Um, it, it may help, um, uh, sort of loosen up that conversation when this gets back to council, if they have those two ideas to ponder. Um, because I think, you know, part of what also gets wrapped up in the, the Park and Maple, um, projects is that often those sites are of a much smaller size, um, where parcel consolidation is, is usually achievable on, on Broad and Washington, not always. Um, but, um, usually projects come in at a size of two, three, four acres on, on those two major streets versus Park and Maple. The question staff usually fields, uh, people with an acre to work with or less.
Yeah, I mean, I don't know. Uh, this is my point, we haven't really figured it out, right? Because there's more, there's commercial, commercially-zoned land that's not on Broad or Park or Maple.
Yeah, I mean, you do say where appropriate. You could say what enables smaller residential-only projects where appropriate.
Yeah. Yeah, that's fine. I mean, I think they'll know, yeah, I mean, I don't, I, I, my whole point is like, it's a bigger, it's a, you gotta spend some time thinking about it more carefully.
Well, yeah, this is Ms. Titts, I just want to make one point. It's the way the special exception works, it's because it's a developer coming in who wants to build a project on commercial property that includes residential, that wouldn't be allowed normally by zoning and land use for that property. But in a case where, let's suppose we did have someone who wanted to build an affordable housing building, which we would love to have. We, as the city, can decide that that land is no longer commercial. We can rezone it and redo the land use. So we have that ability at any point to do that. It's just that we, we, you know, the whole point was that we wanted commercial land to have a bigger return than typically we get from residential. So I just, I just want to point that out, because we were going to build an affordable building off of South Washington, but the whole financing fell apart on that. And that was going to be on commercial property, but we were going to rezone it first as residential, so we could put the building on there. And, but we also had other buildings involved in it, so it was like a whole, it was like a, a very intricate project. But I'm just saying, like, don't, don't forget, we can do it. It's just, the special exception exists because we're trying to protect the value of commercial property. Uh, commercially-zoned land, I should say. So, so don't, you know, don't think we can't put residential buildings on a currently a commercial property. All we have to do is change the zone and the land use.
Doesn't it make it much easier, though? If it's codified, right, that it, then the developer doesn't, then I have to wait on, on a rezoning? And I don't know why that thing fell apart on South Washington, but maybe that would have been easier done if it was.
Well, the financial, one of the financial partners left that project because they felt like it wasn't working well. So there was a whole thing there. But I would just say, does it, I don't think the special exception process is particularly easy. I actually think that if someone came in and said,
Good point.
"We have financing to build an all-affordable housing building, but we can't find any land except this land that's commercial." I think we could change the land use in the zone and much faster than they can get through a special exception.
Yeah, yeah, but I think, I, I think what we're talking about is they say, hey, I want to build a condo building on Park. It's not affordable housing, it's just a condo, it's market-rate condo building.
Well, the, you know, I guess the question is, if, if it's a condo building, it's likely to be retail, it's likely to be revenue positive. So therefore, it wouldn't be a problem.
Well, but it, if it has zero commercial, I mean, other than going through a rezoning, which anyone could try to rezone anything, right? But I, I'm not arguing, I'm just saying, like, I think that what some, what some people are saying is, because we have had proposals for condo buildings on Park, right? And they don't go anywhere, because they don't come close to meeting the existing special exception criteria. And there, other than trying to get the land rezoned, there's no other mechanism.
Well, I think they, they also had other issues, like, I mean, the one that's like on the corner there that tried to happen, um, I think, was it Pennsylvania? Whatever, he, that land was so small, they couldn't actually fit everything on the property. So, I mean, that's, some of it's, some of it is, problem is the land size, the lot size. Those, it's not just the special exception criteria. But anyway, I'm just saying, like, as the city, if we want to do something, we can do whatever we want. The special exceptions there, so that if someone wants to use commercial property, we get the ability to negotiate proffers and other things to make it work better for us. And I guess if someone wanted to put a condo building in, and it didn't work well for us, then, then we're not going to make it happen. But if the condo building works, we would find a way to make it happen.
Well, that's a whole debate we could have, because they couldn't do it currently under the existing SE, because there would be no commercial component.
No, no, they don't, but they don't have to do an SE if we were going to, if we facilitate it. I mean, that's what I'm saying. If we want something to happen, we can change the land use in the, in the zone in ourselves. We use the special exception because we don't want to do it unless the project is going to give us net revenue.
Yes. All right, where do we stand on all this? I've lost track, it's getting late, we still have other, other items. And I'm hoping Joe Muffler's like watching a TV show right now and not listening to all this.
Well, I'll just jump in and encourage the group. I, you, you guys have something down on paper, uh, people are chiming in with thoughts, you're hashing things out. Um, you know, at some point, y- you, you could probably ask, are there other things people want to add to these lists? Or people feel like they're ready to, um, uh, oh, and don't forget, you need to open it to public hearing if you haven't done that already. Um, but otherwise, do people feel like they're comfortable making a motion?
Yes, that's great, Paul. I appreciate your help tonight. Uh, I'll, I'll start by saying, I, if, if item three in the now-there-for part, the incorporating edits, is basically a, a requirement that if the city council doesn't take it, then they need a super majority then, which I think is what that would imply. Uh, I would, uh, make a friendly motion, if we got this motion, to, to move that into the, I further move. Because I personally think if we make this too complicated, nothing will happen. And I'd rather see it get tweaked a little bit. But that's just me. And we could do that through the official process. Um, but other, yeah?
Just to chime in on that, um, uh, when I turned off my camera last, it was to make a, a, a secret phone call to, um, uh, Susan. We were, we were talking about, there, there is an issue when you refer something out for first reading. Um, um, you can't go too far in changing it, uh, when it comes back for second reading. Otherwise, you need to repeat the process and re-advertise it. Um, and I think one of the things we were talking about is whether the, the, the change from the, the lead status from silver to gold would actually meet that, that threshold. I, we haven't asked that question, um, um, of, of the city attorney, so we, so we can't be certain. Um, uh, but I think if you wanted to keep this on, uh, the schedule, um, uh, that was laid out in the timing section, uh, I think, I think it would be smart to move that, uh, to, uh, to sort of combine that as part of the consideration of other items.
Yeah, okay, that's good to know. And I, for what it's worth, in the EDC meeting last week, um, which had four council members there, although only three are on the EDC, uh, it sounded, and I don't want to speculate, but it sounded to me like that they may need more time. So I personally, my strat, my strategic thinking is to, to recommend something that doesn't have very many changes, but be clear about the sort of more robust changes that we think should be made. And that hope, and hope that basically city council isn't, is inspired to go through one more round in order to, uh, take on larger changes. But that's just my take. Um, but I will go to Ms. Weiss, who has her hand up.
I don't understand the logic. Paul, if you can help me understand, like, why is lead gold, lead silver to lead gold something that impacts the secondary reading, but deleting "commercial" wouldn't be? Can you just help me understand why one is different?
Yeah, it, it's, um, it was funny, uh, because they were bringing up, uh, because this came up, uh, I, I think on this very same item when it was at, at council, and they were trying to decide what to refer out. Um, the example given, uh, was when council advertises, uh, the tax rate. Um, so if they, so if the current tax rate, uh, and I, I'm always off by a few decimals, and I don't want to, I don't want to miscalculate it here. So let's imagine that the, the tax rate in the city was a dollar, um, and the council advertised a tax, uh, yeah! Uh, the, the council advertised a tax rate of a dollar five. Uh, they would be free at second reading to adopt anything between a dollar and a dollar five. Um, but they couldn't go up to a dollar six. Um, that would be more than what they had advertised. Um, so here, if you guys remove the word "commercial", um, y- you're essentially closer to what's already on the books. Um, and so you're still within what you, the sort of scope of what you had previously advertised. Um, uh, for the lead requirement, uh, to, to move the bar up from silver to gold, um, stakeholder, the stakeholders in this wouldn't, wouldn't have necessarily been aware of that change. Um, and so that's the reason for, for potentially triggering a, a re-advertising. Now, that being said, um, I don't want to tell the group what to, right? This is, um, right, this, I, uh, I'm just trying to make you guys aware, but obviously, if the group wants to see lead gold, uh, in these projects, then you guys should, should communicate that to council and vote on it.
Okay. Uh, Ms. Weiss, more, more thoughts?
Yeah, I just, I, you know, I, I recall when the ESC hosted a panel discussion on the high school talking about net zero, um, buildings. One of the builders or the designers on that panel, the engineers, it was a net zero, a zero-energy building firm, said they didn't submit a bid on the high school, because they didn't take us seriously, because we didn't have net zero. We didn't have any of the right language. So the world is moving on from where our secondary criteria are. So I think the planning commission needs to decide, all the work that we just went through on chapter five, are we serious about it or not? Do we really want to see more environmentally sustainable buildings? Do we want to see greenhouse gas emissions go down? Do we want to prevent, you know, prepare ourselves for what's coming from climate change? If we are, I think we need to take a bold, not terribly bold stand, we just need to stick to the, have courage in our convictions and say, this matters. I mean, we just last week said, we want to apply an equity and a climate lens to our work, so let's put it here now. In terms of whether lead gold is a deal breaker or not, I want to refer you all to Arlington's green building policy. They just updated it last year. You cannot get bonus density unless you're lead gold or higher. So the market has moved on, our neighbor has moved on, they've put a stake in the ground and, and lead gold. They're giving additional bonus density for zero-carbon certified projects, so that's nowhere in here. So first of all, are we serious about this or not? Definitely, well, secondary criteria, and we just admitted that the secondary criteria are especially, so we completely ignore that the way it works today. So I would be disappointed if we struck this from the first chunk.
Yeah, and just to be clear, I agree with you, but my, my point is like, I just don't think that city council is embarking on this, on that level of a rewrite at this point. So I, I, I think that's fine, I think the result will be, it'll just all stay the same.
I mean, but, but the edit, I mean, there are already edits made to, to all the secondary criteria. So are we allowed to comment on secondary criteria or not? And two commissions have already put in, you know, comments on it.
Oh, no, we can't, I'm just saying, if, if we make changes that city council doesn't like, they'll need a super majority to do anything, otherwise the thing dies. So I, I'm not, that's all I'm saying, like, just making sure we all understand what we're talking about here. You, you know, if we make changes that they aren't willing to, you know, like, they, they can't, you know, if we make changes of what they've currently set up, they'll need a super majority to do something different. So they'll either just shoot it down or they'll take it. So I, I, I'm fine with making a bold stand, I just want us to realize this not, I don't think city council went into this rewrite thinking about this, so.
And just speaking of not terribly bold stand, the language in the secondary criteria is projects are encouraged to achieve lead gold. That's that, you know?
Well, I'm not disagreeing with any of that, I'm not disagreeing with any of that. I'm just, I'm just telling you my take on, on city council and now their, you know, what they thought they were getting into.
Would it help, I mean, a, a super majority, I think is five rather than four, so you're really talking about one additional council member?
Yep, that's right.
Barnet may not be that high.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it, exactly, I mean, I, I just want, as long as everybody understands how it all works, we should, we should vote on, on what we, what we want to try to, try to achieve. It's fine. Um, all right, but we're already like a All right, but we're already like an hour behind schedule and, um, we've got a couple of other things we get to. So, um, I'm going to open this to public hearing, uh, Ms. Bazemore. We don't have to have any public comment on this, do we?
No.
None?
None.
All right, well, with that out of the way, some folks haven't chimed in lately. Does anyone else have any thoughts? Otherwise, we could just take a motion and vote. That's an easy way to go.
I'm just gonna, Mr. Chairman, I'm just gonna tell you that I don't like, number one, I mean, it's just my view. I don't like striking "commercial". And so I, I honestly, it's been a long conversation. I've been trying to hold it the best I can. So I'm not sure exactly where we're winding up. If we're voting on these like one by one or as one package, but, um, I'm not going to support that part of it if we're doing it in parts. Just, just so you know, we're, we're not mad. I just, I think that we have to continue to encourage commercial development as, as part of it. And I think it's important to keep that language in there.
Yeah, and just procedure, I think what we'll do is someone will make a motion and then, I guess you could make a, a friendly amendment that we could vote on if you wanted to strike that, for example. I think that's how it would work, but we'll get there. Just come on, you have your hand up.
Yeah, I just wanted to ask if we could, in the further move section, add, um, you know, or request that staff conduct a review of the 75% affordable housing requirement? If, and determine whether or not that's still an appropriate figure.
I support that.
Just so that happens.
All right. Okay, I think at this point, we could entertain a, a motion. And then if anybody wanted to try to do a friendly amendment, we could. I know it's a long motion and it's getting late, but... Or we could just, I guess we have to do something. We have to make a motion. All right, Ms. Weiss, you, you could do it.
All right, I'll do it. Even though I haven't had a glass of water in a half hour and I'm really thirsty. Okay, so I'll read from the top, uh, proposed, or sorry, I move. Do I need, I need to start with the whereas's, right?
You should, you should technically say. Whereas the blah, blah, blah.
Okay, whereas the city's comprehensive plan identifies planning opportunity areas, POAs, that include numerous instances of underutilized properties that could be subject to either additional development or redevelopment. And whereas the special exception SE provisions in the city's zoning orders and ordinance have been the principal tool for entitling private redevelopment and reinvestment into the city's POAs over the last 20 years. And whereas previously constructed SE projects have improved the city's fiscal, environmental, and social and civic infrastructure by providing additional economic activity, modern stormwater management, and housing opportunities. And whereas the economic conditions for real estate and commercial development fluctuate over time and the city desires to keep its development regulations up to date. And whereas the proposed amendments would edit the primary and secondary criteria to provide flexibility by allowing consideration of projects that provide newer, but not necessarily additional, commercial development. And whereas the proposed amendments include a language to review proposals for consistency with the city's small area plans and a range of community benefits. And whereas the proposed amendments would serve the following purposes: provide flexibility to review mixed-use projects on smaller sites, more closely aligned small area plan guidance and development projects, support revitalization within the city's commercial zoning districts, and further the realization of the comprehensive plan's overall vision for the city. Now, therefore, I move that the planning commission recommend approval of PO20-26 to city council for public hearing and action on February 22nd, 2021, with the following modifications. Emily, could you zoom in on that a little bit? Line one, thank you. Sorry, number one, line 232, remove "commercial" from primary criteria. See? Two, line 216, incorporate environmental sustainability and inclusiveness. Three, incorporate the edits from the ESC and UFC into the secondary criteria, specifically secondary criteria BE and J. I further move that the planning commission request that as a subsequent effort, staff review and recommend updates to the special exception criteria that would, one, conduct a more robust review of the secondary, of the primary and secondary criteria together that enables stronger prioritization of environmental sustainability and affordability. Two, conduct review, conduct review that would enable smaller residential-only projects where appropriate. Three, conduct a review of the 75% affordable housing requirement.
Well done. All right, procedurally, how does this work? We, we have to get a second, get a second, and then we ask for, uh, comments, amendments, et cetera?
Yeah, so, uh, people can, can ask to propose a friendly amendment. Uh, if the friendly amendment is accepted, uh, uh, by Commissioner Weiss and Commissioner Puentes, um, then, then so be it. Otherwise, I think it needs to be treated as, uh, an unfriendly amendment and then the group has to vote. Um, and a majority adds it to the, to the, to the motion on the table.
Got it. So, uh, what do we think? Mr. Krasner, did you want to attempt the friendly amendment that may become unfriendly, even though I'm sure we're all still friends?
Well, yeah, and I'll tell you, I like Robert's Rules of Order, I mean, as you all know, but we're starting to, the gymnastics here mentally are starting to challenge me. But, um, so, yeah, I guess, I mean, I would make an amendment. I guess it's, I don't know if it's friendly or not, but I guess it's, I, I, I would like to keep the word "commercial" in line 232. I think it's important in our commercial corridors to, to, to continue to push for that. I, you know, so I mean, I understand the argument on the other side. I mean, the whole point of this, I think, is loosening up some of the stricter requirements for these projects to be, uh, there as far as the, the commercial nature of these projects. But I still think it's important that, that, that be in there in the primary criteria zone. So that would be my amendment, um, to keep, to, to keep that.
All right, so basically, your amendment is to strike item one under the now therefore I move.
Yeah, that's correct.
All right, Paul, now does someone have to second the amendment? Or do we just see what Ms. Weiss and Mr.?
Uh, no, we just see what, uh, Commissioners Weiss and Puentes have to, uh, whether they accept it or not.
Ms. Weiss?
Well, this feels very antagonistic.
Robert's Rules is designed to do is set up power struggles.
With all due respect and collegiality, I, I don't accept that.
Fair enough. So now, Ms. Bazemore would have us vote on it?
Uh, so, uh, Brent can either sort of ask to, to switch to an unfriendly in which we would trigger a vote, uh, or he can say he withdraws the, the amendment.
All right, before we do that, Mr. Stevens threw his virtual hand up.
Yeah, not that this will make your, uh, evening, but I think the addition of that item two under the further move kind of squeaks it by for me. So I, I think I will vote for this, uh, for this item with the addition of that item.
Okay.
Uh, the other, I mean, the other option out there is if you all, instead of doing a vote, which I think the group is, is, um, a little uncomfortable with, the other option is, is to, to see if you can't, um, maybe tease out some language that, that would make everyone in the group more comfortable.
I'm not afraid of voting. I think I would favor the amend, the amend, the unfriendly, as it turns out amendment. But, um, I'm more reluctant to spend more time on this, so.
And I think a vote is the way to go.
All right, Mr. Krasner, it's up to you. You want to withdraw your amendment or take to a vote? It's up to you.
We can take it to a vote, sure.
All right, Ms. Bazemore, let's do it. So the vote, uh, an affirmative vote would mean removing line one of that now therefore I move. Item one.
Okay, um, Chair Rankin.
Yes.
Mr. Krasner.
Yes.
Ms. Teets.
Yes.
Mr. Puentes.
Yes.
Mr. Stevens.
Uh, no.
Ms. Weiss.
No.
Ms. Koma.
No.
All right.
Thank you.
Now, I wasn't totally keeping track, but that, that passed?
Yeah, that passed for three, so we would strike line one.
And then?
Well, I have a question about that. So, do I add a strike through? Or do you want me to completely delete that from the document?
Delete it, right? We want to delete it.
Yeah, it's a deletion, yeah.
The minutes will show that all of this occurred, right?
Yeah, as well as the recording, I think this is going to be a popcorn-worthy, uh, meeting.
They'll use this in some Robert's Rule class. How not to do it? All right. Any other amendments? If not, I guess we are ready to vote on the remaining motion. Okay, Ms. Bazemore, go for it.
Okay, Chair Rankin.
Yeah.
Mr. Krasner.
Yes.
Ms. Teets.
Yes.
Mr. Puentes.
Yes.
Mr. Stevens.
Yes.
Ms. Weiss.
Yes.
Ms. Koma.
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, thanks, everybody. Thanks, Ms. Bell. Appreciate all your help with this. Good luck with council. All right, moving right along. That wraps up our action items, which brings us to some information items. Planning Commission reports, uh, since I'm already talking, I will say that I was at the EDC meeting, as I mentioned, I think Tim was there, he always takes better notes than I do. But we did spend some time talking about the thing that we just talked about. There is seemingly quite a bit of development activity kind of kicking around with, uh, Founder's Row Two, which is across the street from Founder's Row. The George Mason Square property where I'm currently sitting has some for, uh, probably forgetting about some other stuff. Tim, what else was talked about at the meeting that was super interesting?
I think you, you've covered the main ones. Uh, the, the rest of it was kind of day-to-day stuff that, uh, that they look at in terms of commercial development in the city. But I don't think anything that affects our work immediately.
Yeah. Uh, Ms. Teets, did you have any reports?
Well, Parks and Rec was supposed to meet tonight because we're overlapping right now, but they didn't, we canceled that meeting. But they did send out a memo, um, so if you guys remember back a long time ago, February 2020, we were told about the empower with. And so we, over this year, we are actually now ready to do a pilot installation. So you're going to start seeing the use of, um, LED lights in our streetlights. So they're going to do a small portion of the city first. So I just wanted to mention that because kind of close it, close that circle since our presentation was like a year ago and I didn't know if people remembered it. And they're going to stick with, um, for the, you know, the streetlights that have that old-fashioned look. They're going to stick with that basic acorn look for those. So we're not going to really change the look of the streetlights, we're just changing the light itself. And so that's a nice energy efficiency thing for us.
Cool. And someone picked out a light that's not like blinding, I assume.
Well, that's what the pilot's for, that they, um, they're trying to be careful with how the light works and what the color is. They're trying to get the right color. So they'll do the pilot and, um, hopefully, I guess when they do it, they'll, they'll send information out, I hope, about where they're doing it so we can go look at it. And, and then we can get some feedback. And if we don't like it, then we can change it.
All right, any other, uh, planning commission reports? Paul is your hand up on purpose?
It is, just a flag for the group. Uh, your work session item AC is in, uh, an update on the, the LED streetlight project.
I'll be impressed if that makes it in the, under the time limit tonight. But I did know that. Um, all right, well.
No, I apologize. I didn't see that all the way at the bottom. I think it's because there were so many other things in our work session.
All right, uh, that's it for planning commission reports. Paul, do you have any very brief directors or, oh, Tim, you've got your hand up.
Well, I was just going to say, if we don't get to that, that last time, then let me comment very quickly that, uh, some models on the, uh, streetlights that do not have glass frames. And what's happened in other jurisdictions when they've implemented these, people start calling in broken light requests, and so there needs to be some education. So just, you know, it's a good thing for people to be aware of that these mods, a lot of these models with the LED lights do not have glass frames.
Which I assume is good for long-term operational costs.
Totally. It's just people look at it and they think somebody's thrown a stone up there and, you know, broken the, the glass up.
Good. All right, Mr. Satter, very brief director's report.
Uh, no director's report this week. I think there was a lot of ground covered, uh, just last week.
Excellent. All right, that brings us into our work session. We have three items. Two, two are potentially significant, so we got to burn through these. The first one is the Founder's Row Special Exception Amendment regarding the theater condition. I assume we'll get a quick rundown on this. And it looks like the applicant is here to answer questions.
Yeah, I'll introduce the item briefly and, um, uh, Deputy Planning Director Gary Fuller's on and he's been, he's been carrying this one and he's very familiar with the project. So I'll just introduce it briefly before I turn it over to, to, to Gary for any staff notes. And, and yes, the applicant's also here, um, uh, with a set of slides that, uh, that didn't go out in the distribution, but we are ready to share them on the screen. So this is, uh, an item that's been referred due. Technically, it's being brought forward as a, as a special exception amendment. Uh, and that's because it's a requested change, uh, to the special exception criteria, or the, I'm sorry, the voluntary concessions. There's, there's nothing changing in the programming of the building. But it is related to, uh, the mechanics of the, the voluntary concessions and, and how construction of the theater relates to the, to the release of residential COs. So again, it's not a change in the project, just the, the conditions for, for release. With that, I'll turn it over, uh, to, to Gary Fuller, uh, for a brief staff report. Uh, and then I think we'll, we'll, uh, send it over to the applicant. Gary, are you still on? I know it's been a long meeting.
There we go. I'm coming on now.
Yep, can hear you and see you.
Great, thank you. All right. So let me just, uh, zoom in here. All right, anyway, um, so I'll introduce this item, um, as well. So with, uh, Founder's Row, um, the theater condition has a requirement where the, um, COs for the residential, the last 50% are tied to the theater and the ability to, um, have that advanced, uh, as part of the project. It was basically guaranteeing the commercial piece. And so, uh, there, there was a VC that indicated that, uh, 50% of the residential, uh, COs would be held until, uh, 50% of the fit-out area for the theater was completed. So that work, as well as having the theater, uh, was a prerequisite to get the second half of the residential COs. In terms of the, um, project, obviously, uh, with the pandemic, uh, while they did all their due diligence and had secured a lease with, uh, um, Studio Movie Grill, they're in bankruptcy now. And so therefore, there is not a current theater. And so without that theater, they're not able to advance the fit-out. And so staff had met with them for, um, about a month and we kind of went over some, some different scenarios in which we could maintain a guarantee. And that's the purpose. And so the other thing is, is they're still pursuing, uh, the theater. And so this, um, proposed resolution would not change the requirement for theater in any way. It would, uh, that would continue to be a requirement for this. In terms of the benchmark that was guaranteeing the fit-out work was being done, we're proposing, and we've discussed this with the applicant, that we would escrow with a third party rather than the city trying to do the releases as, as they Do the releases as, as they needed the money in the future. We would escrow over $3 million, which represents. A, over half of the fit out costs, typically those fit out costs are shared with the actual tenant. And so this would be set aside and that would guarantee that that money is there in escrow with a third party. To implement the fit out when the, a future theater comes in. Whether that's immediate or in the distant future. So anyway, that's where we are. The resolution. Lays that out. So we're just changing the voluntary concessions. This one reference, we're not changing any, anything else associated with the VCs or the overall special exception approvals. Which were done in August 13th. Let's see, 2018. And then, you know, they've been under construction since. So it's about a two and a half year construction timeframe that will finish by the end of 2021, for the most part. Obviously, the pandemic has delayed potential lease ups for the commercial elements of this project. And anyway, so that's the situation. This is the proposed. Changes to the VC that would allow them to proceed. At the same time, the city would continue to have some guarantees. And we would continue to look for a theater for this site in, in this marketplace. So that's, so the recommendation to the council is to recommend this resolution. They'll be meeting later on this month. So that's the end of my report. I'd be happy to take questions. I know Joe Muffler is on this meeting virtually. And I don't know if he has any comments he would like to make. I would welcome those at this point. Otherwise, we'll both take questions. Thank you.
Thanks, Gary.
Thank you, Gary. Can you all hear me?
Yes, we can.
Great. Well, I appreciate that. Emily has some slides, but I want to thank Gary for the kind introduction, the thorough introduction. And it has stolen much of my thunder. So I will try to go through this very quickly as he's covered. Most of the salient points associated with this request from Mill Creek and our partnership. So Emily, if you don't mind clicking through to the second slide. Again, Gary walked you through the construction timeline and the major milestones, but there are just a couple of points I think are of good reference here. The first of which is that despite all manner of natural and manmade impediments. That would try and get in the way of the schedule, I am proud of the team and, and city staff and the amount of effort they have put in to keep this project on schedule. So September 1st of this year is plus or minus when the planned grand opening of the residential and retail that we have at that point in time is planned. That is the same date as it was when we essentially closed on this project at the end of 2018. So despite COVID and floods and all manner of things, we've managed to hold that target. Which again, a great debt of gratitude goes to staff. Project completion, I'm showing here as March 2022. The reality is that's probably the outside date barring any additional impediments that come our way over the next 12 months. I think it will be earlier than that. And then again, most salient to our conversation is we talk about a movie theater. While we do not have a tenant now, I will, I will certainly touch on our search and where we stand today. The outside date of the operators we have spoken with has been Memorial Day 2022, just because everyone has traditionally pegged that as such a strong movie weekend. But the reality is that theater could be opened as early as, you know, very early 2022 up to Memorial Day is the very outside date. So don't hope, use that as a hard and fast rule, use it more as kind of an outside, outside date guideline. Emily, you can click through the next two pages pretty quickly. These are just, again, if you haven't left your house because you've been taking the pandemic extra serious. Just want to make sure everyone's aware of the kind of the state of the project. These are from about two weeks ago. This picture does show the movie theater shell. And the only thing I want to touch on there is that per our agreement with Studio Movie Grill. What we were providing them was what's called a cold dark shell. When you're dealing with 30,000 square foot movie theater, it's essentially a warehouse. And then they were going to take it from this point forward to build it out and with all the comfortable seats and projectors and everything that you would see in a traditional movie theater. The good news on that is that because we have not advanced any kind of tenant specific work in that. Reporters that we are able to secure to backfill the movie theater space. That portion that's, that's open right there, open air right there, that'll be closed up if it isn't already. Emily, if you don't mind clicking the next slide. This is an overview of the retail plan that, you know, was exhibited to you all. And this is a little bit more refined, a little prettier, but what was exhibited two years ago essentially. One of the things that we're emphasizing here that I think is worthwhile, we talked about it at length at Economic Development last night, is just. How we're trying to sell Founders Row and the retail experience to potential tenants and the abundance of outdoor seating. I think it's one of the things that Planning Commission and all the various boards and commissions and council really worked with this hard on was how do we create this sense of place and outdoor activity and activation and vibrancy? And God knows that that's going to come in very handy post pandemic when emphasis from all manner of retail tenants is outdoor, 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 indoor, outdoor activation, et cetera, et cetera. I do want to use this opportunity to say, you know, number 14 is the movie theater space. As Gary mentioned, Studio Movie Grill did file for bankruptcy in October of last year. I'm not going to use this as a platform to, to preach about the state of the movie theater industry. I think anyone that's, that's read the paper or just been a part of culture understands the dire straits that the industry is in. They were not the first major movie theater operator to file for bankruptcy. They likely won't be the last one to either. That being said, and we'll put a pin on this, pin in this, we'll come back to this later. In extensive conversations we've had canvassing the market, we, as in the owner and the operator, owner and developer of the project. Do feel confident in a successful movie theater, in Founders Row, being able to house a successful movie theater despite. How difficult things might seem today. We'll revisit that. In terms of other retail, there has not been any additional leasing that I can speak to. As you can imagine, the last 12 months have been extraordinarily difficult from a retail leasing perspective. Most tenants where we stand today are continuing to say, let's get through this winter. Let's survive the winter. And when things get better, the vaccines are rolling out, people can sit outdoors again, then we can really start looking at expansion plans. That being said, there are still tenants in the market and I will say that in the last two months, we've had more touring activity than we've had in the previous 12 months combined. So there is a good amount of activity, nothing that I can publicly disclose tonight, but I don't want to sit here and make it, you know, I'm certainly not trying to say woe is me. That is not my objective tonight. I do want to paint a realistic picture while saying I still, we still firmly believe in the success of this project. It's just going slower than expected, than we expected two years ago, but I think where we stand today is about what you would anticipate. Given everything that's occurred during the pandemic. Emily, could you go to the next slide? So this brings us to our request. Gary hit on some of these things, but I am going to reemphasize them. Because I think it's incredibly important to say from ownership, we are not requesting a programmatic change to this project. The, the retail stays the same as it was approved. The residential stays the same as it was approved. Any matters of design, massing, parking, et cetera, are the same as approved. One other piece that I, I do feel is worth mentioning, I emphasized it repeatedly when we were going through the original special exception process. Is that Mill Creek and our partners are the 100% owners of both the residential portion and the commercial portions of this project. And that's important because this is not an unsubstantial amount of retail. And thus, it is not an unsubstantial, unsubstantial part of our bottom line. Our value from this project is directly derived from the retail and the commercial experience. And I say that because we are not best served by letting, by letting this commercial lay fallow for an extended period of time. We are extremely incentive motivated to, to fill this with the right operators in a timely fashion. And as a part of that, we are of the belief, we are of the investment thesis. That a movie theater is a rising tide that creates a better commercial environment and a better residential environment for this entire project. We don't feel we are best served by replacing this theater unless for some reason, you know, theaters were just impossible to obtain, which we are not saying today. So all of that said, we'll get into the specific text, but what we are seeking is again, not a change to the program. But a revision to what we're calling the, the quote unquote accountability provision. So beyond the, our bottom line motivation. It's the extra hook that keeps Mill Creek motivated, publicly motivated. To, to bring a movie theater to the city as we committed to during our original entitlement process. This switch will essentially allow us more time. We have worked very hard with city staff to find something that's mutually beneficial. That's a win-win for everyone, that's everyone here. And this is just taking into the harsh, you know, realities that the economy has wrought on the movie theater industry over the last 12 months. So Emily, I, I think there's one more slide, maybe there's two, but the next slide, sorry, the previous slide. So this is the substantive text. You don't have to read every last item, I'm sure it's in the documents. But as Paul and Gary mentioned, what we are requesting is a change of the accountability. From 50% of the residential units being held back until the movie theater opens or starts their tenant improvements. To us escrowing $3.6 million, which is a substantial amount of cash. And just, just for reference sake. That cash represented the tenant improvement dollars the Mill Creek was going to commit to Studio Movie Grill. So this is a market data point for what we will have to commit to a movie theater to get them to construct their space here at Founders Row. Once we get to that 50% CO mark, if a theater has not begun their tenant improvements. That, that cash will go to the city and it will be held there without sunset until the city gets their movie theater. And then an additional provision that we have added is that on a monthly basis, we will provide city staff with, with what I'm deeming a confidential. Just because, you know, there's only so much we can say publicly about our negotiations with theater operators. But we will provide them with a staff update to assure them that we are genuine in our efforts, that we are active in our efforts and that we are in the market doing our best to solve this issue. And then to that end, Emily, last slide. To that end, just to kind of bring you full circle as to where we are today. We have engaged the services of a consultant out in Hollywood who has worked in the theater industry for the better part of four decades. Originally on the operator side in all manner of C-suite positions, in the last couple of decades representing owner developers like myself in our negotiations and search for movie theater operators. So he has canvassed the market, he's given us the inside baseball scoop, he's talked to the CEOs of pretty much every major theater chain and brought them this project. From him, I will say, we do have optionality on the table right now. We are in discussions with theater operators to backfill. However, as you can imagine in today's state, those terms, those agreements are substantially different than what we went through three years ago. So we are doing our best to level set, to really understand, to vet out the operators. We don't want to find ourselves in this situation again. So that's the process that we are going through today. I don't have a replacement tenant. I am confident, I am bullish in the theater industry, both personally and professionally. And again, I, I think what the net, net of all this is, is that we are requesting that we not sit here with a half empty building, which serves no one any good. The city, ownership, banks, theaters, no one benefits from a half empty building. While we're trying to contend with just the realities of, of today. One last point, I forgot to mention this earlier, this was a question yesterday in terms of fiscal impact. Because the 50% CO tool, just to be clear, is a good tool under, you know, general circumstances. To ensure that, you know, developers are following through on their promises. Clearly, this is an extreme circumstance where the theater industry among any retail tenant is probably struggling the worst. But from a fiscal impact perspective, one thing that Becky Whitman did point out yesterday is that, you know, the fiscal impact is based on a hypothetical model. That model would not be, you know, overly negative, if at all negatively influenced by, by putting in the 50% CO, by allowing us to occupy. If anything, it helps by putting, you know, more residents into the city, more tax paying residents into the city. Certainly, it helps with the retail and the theater search. More people in your project only attracts better retail operators and tenants. So again, I thoroughly appreciate Paul and Gary and the rest of staff's brainstorming on this to find a win-win solution. And hopefully, that's what we're presenting to you here tonight. So there's one more slide that just says thank you and questions, but happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thanks, Joe. Gary, did you have a quick comment or?
Yes. So I just wanted to mention that obviously, this is a work session item tonight. And then we'll be scheduling this for a public hearing on February 17th. So your next regular meeting. And then on February 22nd, the following week. The city council has scheduled this for their public hearing. So at, at this point, we're here to take questions, to discuss this in the work session format. And to get ready for your public hearing coming up in the middle of this month. Thank you.
Sounds good. Mr. Stevens?
Yeah, thanks. I don't anticipate having any difficulty in going along with this when it comes back to us for action. But I did have one question, and I think this would be for Mr. Fuller and Mr. Stoddard. I'm just curious whether there was any consideration. I mean, clearly, the 3.6 million in escrow is, 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 you know, significant, you know, leverage. But I'm just wondering if there was any discussion of holding back maybe 5% of the units. As, as until a lease were signed, let's say, as, just as an additional assurance to, to make sure that everything goes as we all hope, hope it will.
Well, actually, there is five. There's a, another clause in this that actually holds. Some of the units at the end, which would equate to almost what, what you were talking about in terms of percentage. So there is another small unit hole at the end that we're, we are not releasing at this point. Now, that's tied to the, not the theater directly, but it's tied to the retail. And so there's a retail condition that's similar to the theater condition. Where there's a, a small hole at the end, I think it's 20 units. Which is, you know, not, not too far from the 5% you're talking about. Now, that's related to the other general commercial. And the 50% kind of completion of fit outs associated with that. So that will still exist under their current VCs. So that's not directly tied to the theater, but it's tied to the commercial.
Yeah. Well, and I know, I mean, obviously, you're into some sensitive issues here as to the lender and whether or not they would suspend draws unless XYZ happens. And, you know, that's all behind the scenes, that sort of thing, you know, we wouldn't know about that. But, you know, I think overall, I, I'm still very positive on this, on this project. And Mr. Muffler and Mill Creek have been very good partners. And, you know, I think it behooves the city to. To do as much as, as is reasonable here to help this project along in, in light of the circumstances.
Thanks, Mr. Stevens. Any other comments or questions?
Yeah, I'll, Mr. Chairman, I'll just add, I mean, to me, this seems, you know, essentially like a no brainer. And I, I think that, you know, obviously. You know, this, something, anything even remotely like this, you know, 12 months ago, obviously would have almost been met with disbelief. But, you know, the last year has so fundamentally changed the dynamics of, you know, certainly the theater industry. I mean, if any industry, I mean, there are several, I guess, that are, that are sort of been the poster children for being hammered by the last 12 months. You know, movie theaters are certainly, maybe not at the top of that list, but they're up there and. To, you know, have the whole project held hostage to something like that, I think would not be in the city's best interest in any way, shape or form. And to me, this seems very reasonable. And by no means are we abandoning that. And I heard Mr. What Mr. Muffler said, it sounds like, you know, Mill Creek feels the same way. And they're putting their money where their mouth is, so to speak, with the escrow. So I think this makes a lot of sense. It's in everyone's interest to keep construction moving forward, to keep the project moving forward. And, you know, I'm, I think, I'm glad, I'm glad to hear this. I will admit before I knew what was happening, I was wondering how things were going over there with respect to the theater. So, you know, I think this is, this is a logical way to hopefully get past this, this unique period, you know, in, in history. And make sure this project can ultimately succeed.
All right. Thank you. Any other comments or questions? I have a couple, but. All right. Thank you. Any other comments or questions? I have a couple, but one of the people go first if they want. All right. I'll start doing my stuff. If other people think of something, just put up your fake hand. Um, one thought or one question I have is, um, 3.6 million is a lot of money for tenant improvement build-out. Um, I'm guessing that the cost of build-out goes up over time. It, was there ever any consideration given to that number going up over time? I mean, I, I, I'll, first of all, I'll preface this with, I'm personally not too worried about it. I think while the pandemic has wiped out theaters now, it hasn't fundamentally changed, uh, the desire to go to the theater. If anything, it's going to be a lot of pent-up demand. So, uh, I also think there's a lot of people out there with money to spend on things like this. So I suspect, you know, your target of next Memorial Day will be easily met. I'm not personally too worried about, but who knows, right? So if things don't work out, um, and we're here a year from now and the, the construction hasn't started, I'm guessing the 3.6 million is not going to be what is need to, needed. So has there been any thoughts to increase net over time? That's one of my questions.
So I, I'll say this, uh, and I appreciate the comment. We had conversations about what the appropriate amount of money is. And the most candid answer I can give you is, I don't know. Like this is, this is, we're in the, we're in a brave new world in negotiating these terms. I can tell you that that term of $120 a square foot though, has been pretty constant. That was, that was the Studio Movie Grill term. That was, that was in their lease, just to be transparent. Um, and it has remained pretty constant. Uh, that is not the cost to build out a theater, right? That, that, that was the cost of the tenant improvement dollars. Um, and between us and staff, we felt that it was a fair data point, uh, to say that that is a substantial amount of money. Trust me, that is not an amount of money that Mill Creek just can say, we can leave this park and walk away, uh, and just let this burn. Um, so that, that, that's, that's the easiest answer I have for you. May we have to put in more money? Sure. Maybe we put in less money. We might, uh, in which case it still gets released, you know, in proportion to the lease.
Yeah. I wish I could get 120 bucks square foot for my next build-out.
Yeah, yeah, substantial.
And then I, I think I know the answer to this, but there's no way down the road you guys could decide to put something other than a theater in there without coming back and asking for another adjustment.
That's correct. We, you, we would have to, we'd have to go through this process all over again.
Right. So if some other use pops up and everyone's like, actually that would be great. You guys could come back and city council would say, sure, but you can't do that on your own.
No, no, yeah. No one has the crystal ball as to where theaters are three, six, nine months from now. If we, if, if something happens, if we have to cross a bridge, we have to go back through council and through the process.
Yeah. And then my only thought was, and I, I tried to noodle this through and you kind of touched on it, is like, it is a big project and no offense, I, I, I appreciate you saying, you know, all of it's got to work for us to make money, but part of your, you know, your thinking goes, well, you know, maybe Mill Creek's like, ah, 3.6 million, we were going to spend that on build-out anyway, just, you know, flush that. Let's not worry about this anymore. Just move on, get our apartments going and making our money. But it is a lot of money, I think, no matter how you slice it. And while you were going to spend that anyway on tenant improvements, I assume you were banking on getting some rent payments. And I agree, I think having a movie theater is going to make it a heck of a lot easier to rent out all those apartments and fill those other retail places. So I, I tend to agree that you guys have lots of motivation beyond the 3.6 million dollars to get a theater in there. And I, I think it'll happen. So I'm, I'm, I'm basically fine with all of this.
Appreciate that. Yeah, the, the, the capitalized income, let alone the, the, the 3.6 million dollars, but the capitalized income from a theater and then the quality attendance you'd get from a theater surrounding it, I mean, it is significant. It's significant.
Yeah. Okay. Does anyone else have any thoughts or comments? Not seeing any. I think we will see this in, in two weeks and it sounds like, um, it'll be not a big deal. We'll get through it quickly. Sorry for the late night, Mr. Muffler.
No, I appreciate it. The Golden Globes were announced premature after that Roberts Rule of Order debate. That was, that was fun. So, I appreciate it, everyone. I'll see you in two weeks.
All right. Thanks.
Take care.
All right. That gets us to item 8B. The fiscal year 2022, 2026 CIP. And I think Ms. Mester has been hanging around all this time just to get to this. Her favorite thing every year. Uh, I don't know, Paul, is someone introducing this?
Uh, I was, I was just going to introduce it by saying, I'm going to sort of step out of the meeting at this point, uh, and hand it over to Cindy. Uh, as you said, this is, uh, this is the annual event, um, uh, with Cindy Deputy City Manager. Uh, Cindy Mester presenting the, um, uh, CIP materials. Uh, and I think there, there's some here and there's, there's more to follow later, but I'll, I'll step out at this point and, and, um, turn it over to Cindy.
Well, thank you Chair, Planning Commission members and Mr. Stoddard. I am pleased to be here. Um, and, um, we're going to do this in two, uh, sessions this year, and I know you've had a full agenda tonight. I'm going to try to cover this holistically, but move as quickly as I can and then defer to questions or seek questions that we can answer, uh, when I come back on the 17th. The staff report that we provided for you in today's packet, um, was intended to tee up the standard history and background of why we do the CIP. So you'll see that in the front part of your staff report as Emily is displaying for us here on screen. I have put a proposed motion forward for your consideration. Not that it needs to be completed today, and obviously the vote will be on the 17th, um, but have left the number seven other in there so that you could add additional points either tonight, if you have some direction or at the meeting on the 17th. Um, as you recall, last year you added some, uh, terminology like around green infrastructure and so forth. So that's been a useful framework. Um, and some of the actions from last year have fed in really nicely to projects that we're working on as well as the legislative program that's going on concurrently with the General Assembly. So tonight I plan to go through the agenda and some key points. The main focus would be setting up today, sort of where we are on the existing, uh, projects that have been approved in previous CIPs so that we circle and close that loop with you all. And then on the 17th, I'll do the formal presentation where I have the slides and do some highlights on the finances and specific projects. Um, I will note that just, um, this evening, we did finish the full official CIP notebook, um, which this year you all will get in, um, electronic form, except for I think we have one or two commissioners that asked for hard copy, which we will do. Um, that was completed and we, um, provided it to Emily so she can share that with the planning commissioners. So you can start reviewing it over the next two weeks and it's also posted on the city's website. It is a little later than I had hoped. I'd hope to get it out to you all Monday, but I have to say that snow, technology, remote work and working with a lot of Excel documents and linking them, uh, delayed us. So my apologies for getting that out a little later. But, um, you will have it, um, with Emily's help, uh, right away, and then it is on the website as I mentioned. So what I'd like to do next is go through a few sections of this memo and some of the attachments, um, and teeing us up for the 17th. And, um, as you noted before, the, um, streetlights is on tonight's agenda, which of course is an existing, um, CIP project. And you do have a full memo attached to that. So although I lightly reference it in my CIP, I'll defer that to the separate item, depending on how time permits. And if Mr. Millard is, uh, Lionel's able to join us, or I will cover that. So with that, uh, this is the first work sessions. February 17th is your scheduled vote. And if you would, um, Emily, let's go ahead and jump to line 93. And, um, I just wanted to highlight that, um, this is an even number year. So under our framework, this is when new projects, um, would normally be considered and included. It, that has been limited. Um, so a lot of what you will see in the future, CIP, uh, 22 to 27 will look very familiar to you all. Partially that is revenue constraints due to COVID. As you were just hearing in the commercial world, that of course has impacted local governments as well. That's also influenced by the desire to make sure we're staffing this properly and delivering. And I'm really excited with the snapshots that will highlight some projects, how much we've accomplished. We have included some projects in the out-years, um, because that's very important as we've talked about to do that 10-year planning horizon. So you will see the North Washington POA, um, was in there last year. It's still in there in that 10-year window. So we can really start refining that and looking for grant resources. We've also added new this year, the West Broad Gordon Triangle POA to start building that out. There is a standalone, separate, uh, Kaiser Garage project that, um, would be in the downtown POA area. And then previously it had been in that, um, pro- project, program section, but we broke it out separately at the planning, uh, staff's request, um, so that it can be more negotiated with Kaiser as a possibility and pursue, um, funding opportunities. Um, I will note that it's currently not going to be shown as recommended because we have to work through some legal issues of public dollars going to private, uh, property. But having in the CIP will allow staff to continue working on that. There is a new IT project in the near term because we need to reinvest in our core infrastructure. But for the most part, there's nothing new, uh, because of the funding and staff constraints. Uh, moving to line 132. This will just give you a, a synopsis of the budget process. As you know, the first two dates are before you. Um, and then the March 8th, the city manager will present the operating and capital budget to city council. And that will include the planning commission's recommendation at that point. Then we'll have a series of work sessions and we're fine-tuning the dates for some community town halls. And then council is scheduled to adopt on April 22nd. And as we know, the effective date of FY 22 will be July 1st. One of the things I did want to touch base on and would welcome input from the commission starts on line 146. When we were before you in September, we, uh, had provided an update of September of last year, an update on where we were on existing projects. And the intent was to be before the planning commission more often so that we could come to this point where we are now with more input from the planning commission. COVID and funding constraints did not allow for that this year, but one of the things I, um, have been talking to Mr. Stoddard about and, and hope to be able to execute and refine based on your all's input is to get through this process with discussions in a, a constrained timeframe, two weeks, basically. And then plan in the fall, September, October, to come back to you all, both with an update on where we are in existing projects, but to solicit some input, uh, for what you would like to see, um, for the FY 23 to 28 CIP. So I wanted to note that and that kind of continues over to, um, line 158. So that's sort of the plan and I would like your input and concurrence and for refinement as we go through this meeting and next. And then line 160, um, included some answers to questions that came up during your January 27th meeting. Caitlin, um, Salisbury, who does a lot of our work with the CIP with me and grants, um, participates in your meetings as often as she can and, and capture those questions for me. Um, so I did include responses to those in this memo just to facilitate our discussion. Uh, the one question was on fleet replacement vehicles and, and vehicles are actually not in the CIP because of their life cycle and price points. Um, so they do need to be in the operating budget. That has been a point of challenge for our organization because we don't have a regularly funded replacement reserve, which would cover vehicles, IT equipment, for example, um, turf, uh, synthetic turf, um, playing fields. And that is one thing I know our, our CFO is working to hopefully as the economy recovers that we can actually get to that point. Um, in the near term, we don't have, um, vehicles in the, the replacement plan. We are looking at, and, and Kate Walker helps, um, Public Works who oversees the vehicles and the fleet. We're doing some research to see what, where and how we can move more into electric vehicle fleets, the infrastructure we need, the type of vehicles. And there's actually some, um, legislation in the General Assembly that, while it may not make it out this year, hopefully we'll start building some better infrastructure, um, for things like that. Um, for grant opportunities for stormwater, um, there is, um, opportunities out there at the federal level. And our public work stormwater staff have recently put together a, um, memo for the Stormwater Task Force, that outlines some of those at the FEMA level and the state level. And we're working really closely, um, at the state level this year because there is a budget amendment, um, in, to the General Assembly to add some more money to the, um, Stormwater Local Assistance Fund, the SLAF funds. There's also some joint study work to, um, study inland and urban flooding, um, so that we can look at quantity and quality. And in working with the city of Alexandria, because we helped draft the study language jointly, uh, we measured included green and gray infrastructure. And since the planning commission had included that in your CIP recommendation last year, we built it into the council's legislative program this year, which then allowed me to roll it into actual budget amendment language in a joint study. Um, so there's actually this year in the General Assembly, a lot of good focus on stormwater, trees and some environment. Last year was transportation. All of that, of course, is a bit constrained till we get through the COVID and the revenue impacts, but Virginia's economy overall compared to the rest of the nation is looking more promising in the long-term, short-term is still constrained. So, um, the task force and our public work staff is continuing to stay focused on stormwater and, um, grant opportunities and the CIP that we'll review next week really has a much more refined and accurate stormwater and sanitary sewer, um, projects and funding, um, with the work of the task force and our staff as well as the consultants working on our lead studies. So we'll have more details on that next week, um, or two weeks, excuse me. But also, um, some good things potentially coming out of Richmond in terms of funding and flexibility in how we can apply and use the grants. So with that, I was going to roll into a little bit of a, a highlight on where we are on current CIP projects. And with that, um, Emily, would you be able to shift over to attachment three for me? And Chair, let me pause just for a moment since I'm kind of doing a dialogue lecture here and, and see if anybody wanted a question before I jump into existing projects.
Sounds good. Do, does anyone have any questions or comments at this point? Mr. Stevens?
I have some questions, but I'm not sure when the best time to ask them is. Uh, happy to do it now, but.
No time like the present. Let's just, let's just have Adam.
All right. Um, I, I did have several questions and actually, uh, Ms. Mester has them because I did share them with her uh, in advance, but I wanted to, to pick up a little bit on, uh, the staff report on the lines 118 through 123, which kind of references various physical assets in the city. And I'm just curious at a kind of a 50,000-foot level. So whether or not the city has a, uh, an inventory of all of these physical assets and, uh, included within that some kind of an estimate of remaining life, replacement cost and so forth, uh, as, as part of our, uh, kind of responsible, uh, efforts to, to fund these things on a, on a going forward basis.
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Stevens. And I appreciated you sending me the, the topics of your questions in advance. Um, this, at a 50,000 level, it's sort of, um, yes and no. When we look at, um, fleet, we have a very good, um, asset inventory of our vehicles. replacement values and tied into both our accounting requirements for reporting under Gatsby and our insurance process. So vehicles, good. On facilities and bridges and some of that horizontal as well as vertical infrastructure or properties, we have a good listing of them and they're all insured. But some of the replacement values needs to be updated. And that actually is something I'm working with our insurance company on. We're due for a full reappraisal later this year. They want to wait till the library is done. And now, of course, City Hall is done. And then they'll do select bridges like Van Buren that have been significantly rebuilt and renovated. So I think in the near term, we'll have some better inventory and most importantly, replacement values there. There are some other areas that we need to refine that would be smaller and outside of the C I P like I T equipment and those type of things. So hopefully that gives you a general sense. It's an area where we need to improve the asset tracking and as I mentioned, get some replacement reserves in so we can do some strategic scattered replacement and reinvestment.
Yeah, I think having a good physical inventory of of key assets in the city would would help drive C I P projects going forward. A second question I had is is how the voluntary concession proffers, which have been under discussion quite a bit here recently with the Broad and Washington project, how do they play into the C I P? I know we've kind of seen a lot of focus around the, I think it was around two point four million or two point three million that was originally going to be allocated to schools. And then, you know, there's a lot of discussion about reallocating that to affordable housing. And it's never been clear to me, just, you know, how does that, what effect does that have on the schools? Are they going to come back and say, well, gee, we were counting on that two point three million to do X, Y, Z at at T J? And now we don't have that. Curious how that, how that works.
Sure. And when we see the full C I P next week or seventeenth, and when you get the electronic copy shortly, you'll see where the projects are. So like for the schools, for most of the previous voluntary concessions that were approved, they were targeted to specific uses and they are one-time money. So we tend to target them for one-time use and oftentimes predominantly in the C I P. So we have had some that were specifically for parks. And of course, it needs to be nexus and close to the project that was approved. So we've used some of that money specifically for big chimneys, for example. And then the C I P that's proposed before you, you'll see the Founder's Row Parks money proposed for use in a park master planning effort. For the schools historically, where it's been targeted for schools. Oh, and I should note, we've used library V Cs right now for the current library projects underway. For the schools, when it's designated for schools, then it's gone into part of the capital financing for the project. So a lot has gone into the high school and previously Mary Ellen Henderson. For this cur- and there are some coming from Founder's Row specifically for the schools. And that dollar amount will almost cover the the full amount that's being proposed for T J, for example. So those are targeted for schools. They still will go to schools. For the current Broad and Washington project where it's being proposed to be a dollar amount and then a pot of money or a pool that could be pulled from. If it's pre- prioritized for affordable housing, then for example, it wouldn't be available for the school. So that's part of the analysis underway right now. But when I'm looking at the school's C I P in the next ten-year window, you're seeing funding for T J, which is three and a half million, which can be mostly covered by existing V Cs. And then some of their other projects, which we can talk a more granular about, are not. A lot of them are more maintenance capital and not C I P capital. And so that funding wouldn't be appropriate as a V C that's usually tied to enrollment. These other projects are not enrollment growth based. So that's a little bit of where we've been using V Cs and how they apply to C I P. We have had some like from three oh one West Broad for traffic. And so we've used some of that for N T C, for example, also.
So it sounds like if there's an immediate need, then the money kind of gets mapped over to what that, you know, where it's been allocated. But if there isn't an immediate need, and it sounds like for the schools at least, you know, the 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 two point four, two point two, two point five million from Broad and Washington, that probably wouldn't have been needed anytime soon and probably would have been reallocated anyway. Is that a correct read on my part?
If it was targeted specifically for schools, it couldn't be reallocated, so it would sit there. Unless we went back through the the process to change the V C. And in the past, we have done that on a smaller situation that Mr. Stoddard would recall. We had a transportation one that was targeted specifically for George and then George no longer existed. So the the developer, property owner agreed to change that V C. But if it's targeted for school, it won't go for another use. I think that's why right now with council, you're hearing the dialogue and the request to have the community discussion to reprioritize for affordable housing if we don't need it for schools or library in the near term. So that V Cs are going to where the capital needs are.
Okay. The last question I have, it was just a little follow-up on the E V fleet issue. I I understand your explanation that it's not a C I P issue. But as you, as you know, there's a lot of grant funding that's going to start to become available. And you you just kind of look at what's going on nationally. The federal government is going to seriously think about converting all six hundred and some odd thousand of its vehicles to electric vehicles. And we've also heard recently that General Motors is going to convert its its fleet to E Vs by twenty thirty-five. So, you know, the the momentum is picking up in this arena. We certainly don't want to be left behind if 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 we don't have plans on the books, so to speak, that would enable us to apply for grant funding. So I I think you might have touched that on that when you were speaking earlier. But but any thoughts you have on that? Because I I would certainly encourage that we do get some kind of planning activity underway for electric vehicles for the city.
Sure. And I think that is something both tied to the comp plan chapter and in council's vision and work plan to keep building on. Grants are especially capital grants is definitely very effective and efficient to have it built into your C I P. Because then you can say, you know, it's been endorsed when you're applying for the grants. For a lot of the other grants that are more operating, then it doesn't need to be in the C I P. But you do need to have a master plan or plan in place. So that is something staff is very attuned to as we look to future work plans as we come out of Covid. So your point's well taken.
Hey, Mr. Chair, that's all I have. Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Stevens. And I think everybody knows this, but George was our old local bus system, not somebody that was in the C I P. All right.
So if I, if after that pause, if you don't mind, Chair, I have a few other things I'd just like to highlight to wrap up the memo.
Yep, definitely.
And Emily kindly has put up the snapshot. This is our update of all the existing projects, which I will defer to you to read. And I'm glad to answer any questions for any specific follow-ups. I do want to highlight just a couple. One, to note that we've had a soft opening of Big Chimneys. Of course, it was right in the middle of snow. But we do have substantial completion for Big Chimneys. And so we did a soft opening so people could enjoy it. And then we'll have a much more formal, alabot, virtual and socially distanced safe event in the near future. So that's a great milestone. City Hall is officially blue and complete on the snapshot. And we have received official notification of our lead silver certification. So I did want to highlight that major milestone. Library renovation and expansion is on time and on budget. And so we're progressing nicely there. Moving down to stormwater a little bit, staff were unavailable due to remote work, Covid and the holidays. So we didn't get everything updated under stormwater. So I did want to note that Ren's Branch is a hundred percent complete. So that's positive. Poplar Laurel and Midvale will go to construction March twenty twenty-one. So we're near that start. And, oh, I should say, Ren's Branch is a hundred percent done on design and easement and moving towards construction. And Ellison Branch is the one that's complete. I was misreading my notes to myself. So good progress there. Moving down to public safety, the fire station six H Bay Door replacement. The title here is not updated. It's the bay doors. The funding is approved in F Y twenty-one, but we've had to delay issuing the debt due to Covid. So we're hoping end of this fiscal year, beginning of next year, that we'll get that project back underway. For Park Avenue Great Streets, we we did get the additional M V T A funds. So that's very positive. The project is fully funded now. We, D P W is working to hire a project manager for that project so we can kick off the community engagement and design work. We have recently just requested to M V T A to advance these funds early. There may be an opportunity that they would have money to move this forward. So we did request that as well as the Shreve Road W N O D area M V T A project and hopes to move it forward if funding's available because it's definitely an important need. South Washington Transit Plaza and Streetscapes, if you've been down South Washington near Hillwood, you will know that the sidewalks are well underway in this week or next week. A little delayed because of the snow, the temporary signal pole will be going up as we continue that construction with a target completion date of the end of this year. We have had some challenges on funding for several projects, South Washington and Annandale, South Maple and Annandale, North Washington and Columbia, and also Oak Street Bridge. So several transportation projects. And so in those descriptions, you'll see Covid reference. And that is a result of state revenue shortfalls that forced the Commonwealth Transportation Board, who oversees the funding allegations, to delay the funding award. They were not supposed to delay existing projects. Three of our four intersection projects got delayed and South Oak Street Bridge got delayed. We have spent many an hour with V dot central office and we now have their agreement to modify their funding allocations and move the money back up so we can keep the projects forward, moving. So while they show here a little delay, we will get them back on track now that we've administratively negotiated a solution to that. That, as you can see, Oak Street Bridge is the one that went red. The others had kind of stayed yellow. But we totally had to stop that because they didn't allocate any of the funding within year one. They spread it over four years and so we wouldn't be able to issue a construction contract till we were fully funded. We're working out a solution on that where we might actually have V dot administer the construction because they can advance themselves money, whereas we can't advance money that's not appropriated. And we wouldn't want to be covering V dot with our local tax dollars. So some good stuff, but that has slowed and created some challenges recently, but I think we're back on track. Neighborhood traffic calming, we've got a separate project that I'll highlight in a moment, but we've made really good progress there. So that is a a quick highlight of the snapshot. Attachment four B is the neighborhood traffic calming presentation that we just provided to council. And it was a good comprehensive overview, so I wanted to share that with the planning commission so you have it in entirety in your packet. If you could go to the, I'll just do a couple of slides. The next slide for me, Emily. You can kind of see on the calendar year how many projects we had in the queue and what we were able to progress with. And this was due to council allocating pre-Covid an additional four hundred thousand dollars to the C I P to work on the neighborhood traffic calming projects. Things got put on hold because of Covid, but then council was able to release the funds. And so we have been working very efficiently even with Covid. I really appreciate the staff's work to get through these. So we have closed six of the ones in queue. Two have some minor work left to do just because of weather and timing. We can't do painting and concrete work right now. And then three others were working with the community in design or voting phases. The next slide shows you where we are with the funding. Greenways Downs, which is the federal grant, is the largest of that, which we're starting the community engagement work now. And going to slide five. This will just tell you where we're under construction, finishing out South Maple Avenue, which has some just small concrete and ramp work left to do. And that's also where I'd like to highlight that we have the beautiful new historic stamped text into the sidewalks, which was a pilot project. And Nolan had some ramp and a crosswalk to finish. So mostly done. And there you can see the three projects that we're working with the community on. And I'll just leave you to enjoy the rest of the slides at your leisure. There are some good photos of the work that was able to be accomplished. Next on the memo, going back to that, if you don't mind, Emily, at two oh six. To the actual memo, the zero zero, yeah. Line two oh six, that's the L E D streetlight conversion that's in summary. And I'll, we'll cover the fuller memo in a moment if your time permits. Lines two nineteen and two twenty-four connect back to the report card that the planning staff updated and shared with you on January twenty-seventh for the comprehensive plan report update and the small area plans. I'm not going to go through them today since you've received them at the last meeting. But very important to connect the C I P to those planning documents and we can discuss any questions you have on those. Line two thirty-one is a new item I wanted to bring to the commission's attention. And we'd be very interested, staff would be very interested in input on this effort. This grew out of planning commission's questions about how are we addressing operating and maintenance costs to new capital projects? And so working with our Public Works staff and Caitlin's been taking the lead to coordinate it. We're trying to come up with a cost calculator so that we can have some standard costs for each type of item. And then if we bring in, this example is doing bus shelter costs, street cans and trash recycling, things that go into the streetscape of capital projects and kind of know what it's going to cost to implement. This is helpful. We just did a grant application for smart scale funding for South Washington from South Maple to the city line, which you'll see in the C I P for upcoming C I P. And it was helpful to be able to estimate what the costs would be for that grant application on the capital side. We knew what intersections, what traffic signals, what crosswalks, what bus shelter stops. And we could kind of project out what needs to go into the operating budget. So this is just an example of where we're starting, which building it in an Excel spreadsheet so that we could have it formula driven to translate back out to the operating costs, which of course then needs to be built into, in this case, it would be Public Works budget. So that's a snapshot of where we're starting with that cost calculator. And as I mentioned, we welcome input onto that. And as I mentioned, we welcome input onto that. The line 258. Gives you a little bit more specifics on budget, I have attached bud, council's budget guidance to your memo. Because they have maintained important pieces in their guidance for capital reinvestment. So that's included in your memo. Line 269 is the COVID impact on our six-year improvement program that I was just mentioning where they. Delayed out our funding and would have stopped the projects and we successfully negotiated that back in. And the last item I would just like to highlight Chair and then look forward to any questions or comments as we plan for the. February 17th is to note the equity lens item on line 285. And you have it as an attachment number seven. And if you have that open, Emily, and could shift to that, I would appreciate that. This is a new item that we added to the CIP process this year in response to council request. I also added it to the legislative process and we'll do it as part of operating budget too. But to look at our projects with an equity lens on and use this as one of the diagnostics tools in terms of deciding. How to prioritize projects and funding. And so for the capital projects, I requested every staff submitting a project to include. The template that you have before you and in your packet. These are three example questions that we, our projects we built out. But when you look at the CIP notebook, you will see. The standard project page that you're used to with the description, the dollar amount and the compliance with comp plan. The second page will be the equity lens for that specific project. And that way you can kind of see what the staff's thoughts were related to this. It is our pilot effort, so we are looking to refine it as we use this as a diagnostic tool. The questions we're looking at, since that's small on the screen. Were two for the outward community benefit. And if those weren't applicable to a specific project, then the third question is for internal. Some of the projects, all three were applicable, the questions we were looking at is does the proposed project benefit communities of color, low income neighborhoods, persons with disabilities. And/or the underserved. And what could we do to avoid or mitigate those impacts? The second question was, does the request help reduce disparities and inequities? And if so, how? And the third question, if a project was more internally focused was. How does this project not worsen disparities or inequities? And so we had a good chance to bring to our consciousness discussions about how do you decide, if you've got a sidewalk program, where do you prioritize working? If you're relining. Sewer lines and you have two of equal problems, but one is in a community of low income and one is a higher income, would that change your decision? It wasn't always the deciding factor, it was to be a factor because sometimes safety, cost benefit. Will factor in. As a general rule, as I reviewed all of the equity lenses and as we were making decisions to what could be afforded in the CIP that's being presented to you. It was reassuring to me that we didn't have any of our current projects way out of line. That we were prioritizing things like South Washington where we've had under investment more than North Washington. Or if we started South Washington, let's finish it out. So it didn't have a major swing in how a project was funded or prioritized, but I do believe that. Reinforce that we were on the right lo, right path. And that there was consistency with comp plan adopted vision and a lot of the goals within the, the chapters that the CIP address. So that is Chair, the items I was interested in covering. As an overview for this work session to tee us up with where we are on the existing CIP, some of the pieces that went into developing. The CIP that's being presented to you. And then I look forward to, on the 17th, I'll do a deeper dive into the specific projects, especially the new ones. And then welcome any direction for how you would like the motion. Modified either today or on the 17th.
All right. Thanks for that presentation. We are, we are getting away from procedurally needing to vote. Extend beyond 10:30. I'm wanting to extend it a little bit, but not very long because I'm very tired. But I don't know, I guess we should probably just vote on that now versus trying to get one and a half minutes of comments. Anyone want to make a motion about extending our meeting till like 10:45?
As Chairman, I move we extend the meeting tonight till 10:45 PM.
I'll second.
All right, thank you, Ms. Bazemore, could you do a quick?
Your ring can?
Yes.
Mr. Fagner?
Yes.
Mr. Stevens?
Yes.
Slice?
Yes.
This come on.
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, here we are, who has comments or questions for Cindy, especially as it relates to, you know, what we'd like to see when she comes back next? Anybody? I'll kick off a couple of quick ones just to get your brains going. First of all, equity lens, very cool, I don't know much about these techniques and whether or not this is the best way to do it, but it seems smart to me and I'm glad we're doing it. I encourage us to keep doing it. At our last meeting, we also talked about, and actually the CIP is a great probably place for it. Developing like an environmental impact lens that we apply to basically everything as well. I don't think we need to do it this year or whatever, but that's, I think that's a thing to think about, I mean, I think if you looked at each. Projects and said, hey, could this, you know, could the impact on the environment be better if we tweak something? I suspect we do it, that's sort of like with Zach everything, we probably wouldn't. Turn up a bunch of big changes, but it seems like the way to change big issues is to really force yourself to think about it along the way. That was one comment I had. Cost calculator idea seemed cool to me. It definitely makes me think we should get rid of that street light at Park and Little Falls, what a waste of $3,000 a year. I'm guessing a stop sign is a lot cheaper. And also just thought like the, the, the cost of trash cans is interesting because there's got to be some balance there, right? If you had a few more trash cans, it'd probably be a lot quicker to empty them than having to like deal with these overflowing trash cans everywhere, so. I guess that's my way of saying more trash cans, come on. And then back to your original question, or not your original question, but an early question. I do think it would be great if in the fall, we had a more purposeful opportunity to. Put a bug in your ear about things as you're putting this together, because first of all, I should say, Miss Bester does a lot more for the city than just the CIP. But the CIP is a long process and it takes up like half the year and. You know, us having great CIP ideas right now is not going to be too helpful for this, this cycle. But we had some ideas in the fall, maybe they could work their way in, so I big huge thumbs up there, fully support that. Those are my comments, that's given everybody enough time to think about questions or comments, who we got? Mr. Stevens is unmuted.
Yes, he is, very quickly, I'll echo the support. For the operations maintenance cost calculator, I think that's an excellent idea for, for good governance. I can see that coming in particularly handy as we apply for grants for capital projects. I think too often we'll apply for those grants and, you know, it looks like it's free money, which I guess it is for the upfront costs, but we kind of. Don't necessarily take a close look at the backend, which has all the implications for the city. So this kind of a tool, I think is, is, is an excellent addition to overall, as I say, good management for the city. The only comment I have to think of at the moment regarding our motion for the CIP is. Is the item number two in the proposed motion where it talks about. CIP approaches the citywide capital infrastructure and reinvestments needs in a holistic manner. Not quite sure what the holistic manner means, but we know that there are gaps in capital projects. I mean, that's not saying anything profound there. It's mentioned several times in the staff memo here, but for example, I mean, chapter five. There's, there's a lot of things that have come online in chapter five that don't have CIP funding as of yet. So if that second item is meant to imply that, you know, we think that the CIP budget is proposed, covers all. Key areas in some kind of a balanced way, I'm, I'm not so sure that we have the ability to say that, so. Maybe I have that wrong in terms of interpreting that second item, but I guess my thought at the moment is that we not include that when we, when we adopt the CIP. Doesn't preclude in any way for me, you know, supporting the, the CIP as it's being proposed, but I just thought it would be. More helpful not to convey something to city council that perhaps we didn't really back.
Thank you, Mr. Stevens, if I could, just for that item number two, that's one that's been there a couple of years. And so I think it's good to look at it, make sure it still makes sense to the commission. And I think the intent was to make sure we're trying to address it holistically, but obviously you can't do it all. And so your points for what's in the comp plan and the POAs. Report card shows that we still need to refine it, so maybe there's a refinement I can do on that language. Having heard the support for the environmental lens piece that you brought up, that might be something if the commission wants, I could add to. To a number seven that, you know, direct staff to further develop that concept. So I'll leave that up if you all would like that in your motion, but either way, I appreciate the input on the environmental lens and the calculator.
Thank you.
Alrighty, any other? Actually, while I'm thinking about it, we, we didn't get the books yet, so. I, I don't think I have many questions, but I do feel like I'm going to have some questions about the elevator, just because it's sort of a unique, interesting thing. And my main question, without having much details about it, is just what. What, you know, we, I feel like we've done a lot of studying on parking, like if we have any data that suggests that it will actually be a smart investment. But that, I don't expect you to have an answer to that tonight, but maybe that'll be something that we could touch on when you get back.
Sure, that'd be helpful to have, and if you all have questions in between. Related to the CIP full notebooks, electronic indoor hard copy, I welcome them in advance. If you desire to do that.
All right, does anyone else have any questions or comments?
I have one or a couple.
Sure.
Second, kudos for the equity lens and the. Calculator, those are really great innovations. And I would also second the suggestion for the environmental ones. And also the suggestion for the removal of the traffic light at Park and Little Falls Street.
That one has been discussed after we put it in with grant dollars.
Great. And then I just wanted to know, it's a small thing, but there's a typo in number four in the proposed motion, I think it should be. Either compliant or in compliance.
Thank you.
And I'd also like, would love to hear more about this elevator.
All right, we will definitely flag that one for discussion.
All right, any other comments? And like Ms. Bester said, I think if you guys get the electronic or hard copy of notebooks this week and you have thoughts, don't be afraid to just email them to Cindy directly so she can be prepared. Kind of a tight turnaround on this one. All right, well, I think we can, oh, well, we do have another item, the LED streetlights. We have. Seven minutes to cover that.
And Mr. Stoddard, if you'd like, I'm glad to cover that item.
Yeah, absolutely, thank you.
All right, so you do have a memo from Lionel and Zach for the LED. Streetlights, this is the new CIP program that was adopted in this fiscal year. It is sidewalks slash streetlights with the first year being committed towards the streetlights. Due to the environmental benefits and the cost recovery benefits. I will note that we are continuing this project, combined project into the future CIPs. Right now we have 180,000 for it and going forward, we're proposing 150,000. So this memo will provide you, as Ms. Tease indicated, sort of where we are in the process. And we are looking for planning commission input and feedback as we finalize the plan. The plan is included in the memo that outlines on page two, line 38. Where the corridors, the where these would go. And then which type of fixtures, and there's a picture below so that you can visualize that. And the basic or premium is important because that triggers the price points. And these are under a Dominion contract that we've regionally negotiated, so basic is a pretty affordable one. But there was for the Great Streets because of policy and guidance that the premium was the. Preferred, the premium takes for a longer payback period of about 12 years, the others will be good in four to five years. So as discussed for the parks, that was shifted from one of the earlier discussion points. And so the, the engagement and the feedback was helpful and the memo includes the five. Other four boards and commissions that this has been presented to as well as a list, the, the field visit. So parks would stay with the colonial style, which is pretty much what you see now around City Hall and most of our parks. And as Mr. Stevens noted, and you can see in this picture, there's no shielding around it, which is a. Maintenance benefit, it does allow for the light, brighter light to come out, but because the colonial cutoff has the dark overhead cap. It's dark compliant because the light comes down. It does confuse people initially, so your point, Mr. Stevens, about community education is well. Warranted. The Cobra head looks pretty similar to what we have for Cobra heads and those will basically go on Dominion poles where you see Cobra heads already. And then we've looked at where we would use the. Carlisle in the cutoff acorn on the Great Streets, which aligns with this. Streetscape guidance. We are proposing 3,000 as the color temperatures you see in that middle chart there at line 41, 42. It's wider, brighter, but still in the warmer yellow tone, so it's. More comfortable in the residential areas. The 4,000 is a little wider and cast less shadows for public safety perspective and you can see color differentiations. Besides just like a print that you would see in my jacket I'm wearing today, for example. That would more be in the commercial or areas where the police felt. The public safety purpose, we needed it higher. We would reduce the wattage because these are definitely more efficient and more bright, they probably will seem brighter to the public. Regardless, because some of our lights are so old that they are worn out and dim. And so anything, even if we put a new bulb in, some of them are going to see brighter, so they will be brighter. And that is why we're proposing doing a targeted pilot project so we can. Let the community see and know that we're switching to this project, we would do community direct mailing to those that are going to get. The lights on their streets area. And then we would do broader community engagement as a heads up. Also studied as part of these light selection, which was. Also studied as part of these light selection, which was a diverse group of staff initially from planning, public works, public safety and environmental sustainability. Picking the lights also allowed us to pick whether like in a park, it's a full 360. So you get no shadows and you cover broad areas. Or if you're on a residential street, then it does sidewalk down to the road versus not into the home. So part of that was also factored into the fixture type. So we're very excited to finally be getting to the point where we can finish the upfront design and community engagement piece and actually start executing this project. As noted in the memo, Dominion is already switching out LEDs. They're not fixing current light fixtures in that mode. And so we're starting to get sporadic ones throughout the city. And I think we're up to about four on the city hall campus. And so we definitely want to be in control and provide the direction for what Dominion is replacing. This approval would be used to execute the CIP where we would upfront pay for Dominion to order and replace streets in phases, but all holistically. But they would also use this for any replacement repairs that they have to do prior to the CIP project. So we'd start getting consistency. So with that, Chair, I will close, answer any questions and hope to keep you to your 10:45 motion.
Thank you. That gives us one minute for questions about LED. Anyone have any LED questions?
I have a quick question. I'm, I'm a little concerned about not having cutoff fixtures for the residential acorns or residential lights. I think that that's a mistake. There are, there are streets that have, you know, I mean, a lot of streets have the Cobras, but a lot of, there's a lot of streets in town that have the colonial fixtures today. And I think it would be a mistake to substitute those with non cutoff. I think that this, the glare, it's just unnecessary. You know, the, the, the light pollution that it caught that, you know, would add. I don't, especially, you know, they tend to be on lower traffic neighborhood streets. Like my own street, I'm just thinking of that just as an example because I'm familiar with it, but I'm Lincoln. So I don't, I think it would be worth to see how many of those lights we have in on residential streets. But I think having the basic acorn would be a bad idea. I think it should be full cutoff. I mean, it's just, you know, I don't know why we'd want to introduce that type of light pollution into our quiet residential streets.
All right, I will take that back and review it with Lionel, who's our project manager, and then our CPads and planning team.
Especially because the existing, the existing lights we have of that style are, are cut off right now. They're, they're, you know, even though they have the older technology, older bulbs, they're still full cutoff. So I don't know why we'd want to change that.
All right. Mr. Stevens, your comment or question?
Yeah, fully support the program. I wish we could find the funding for the pool 180,000 to get the whole thing done now as, as I've thought in the past, this is the only CIP project that has a positive return on investment for the city. So
I would like to clarify, we do have the 186,000 in FY21 this current year. So we are funded as long as we stay, don't go too many premiums. Premiums may require us if we shift to some of these questions, but we, we have 186,000 now that we can start deploying this. 150,000 would be for next year and now.
All right. So the news gets even better. I think the, having a pilot makes a lot of sense and that also ties into the public education. Just so people know and can provide their, their input. It would really be a shame if, if a number of these lights get put in and then, and then people start to observe that they might have some issues with it. And let's see, I, I would strongly support the 3,000 Kelvin more natural light than the, than the 4,000. So I hope the police department can not push too hard on the, just strictly the, the, the law enforcement perspective, but consider the environmental aspects as well.
No, they're very collaborative with us on it. It would be targeted areas of concern and right now predominantly a, a commercial focus, not residential.
All right, great. Any other quick thoughts or comments before we wrap this up? All right, not seeing any. I appreciate everybody staying up late and providing a lot of good information, but we are adjourned and I'll see you in two weeks.
Good night. Thank you very much, commissioners.
Yeah, thank you.